Start recording. So, um, uh, what we're doing today, I'll just do a quick like it's gonna be two seconds. We're gonna finish five point nine. We didn't do five point nine. Uh, and then, uh, we did talk about, we did do some, we did do seven point one, so we still have seven point two to do, uh, seven point two to do. Right, which is just diagonalization. This is general solution to a, um, to a system. Just say a system. Um, and this is diagonalization. And this, and then we have nine point one as well, which is just, uh, abstract vector spaces. Um, yeah, okay. So, uh, and this will probably take a little bit of time. So hopefully we'll get to that, okay? So, let's start with five point nine. Uh, five point nine is, uh, oh yeah, and then after, right after the, right after this, we'll do a, uh, a practice test. The practice test. From last year. Cause I still have not done that. And I should definitely do that before the test, so. Oh yeah, I'll put these sticky notes back on the screen. For a second, I was like, what are these doing here? Uh, put this back on the screen, I need to know where to put it though. Let's see. Can you see this? Yes, can't see that, okay. That's approximately it. Oh boy, wow, that's a crooked line, but that's okay. There. Okay, we're in business. We're not in business, we're in engineering, but that's alright. So.
But that might's too early.
Okay, well, it's probably gonna fall off, but it's fine. So, um, five point nine is, like I said, general solution to a system of linear equations. I don't really actually understand what's going on here, but the basic thing is that what you call a general solution, right? A general solution. Oh, solution. So this is five point nine. Is basically you take the, uh, you take the same system, but make it homogeneous, right? So you, you take the same, like, it's the A matrix, right? Ax equals zero. And you get the, the kernel, basically, you're getting the kernel of it, right? So the kernel of A, or the null space of A, it's the same thing, just solving the system. So then you take a basis for that, so I'll say basis for kernel, right? You take a basis for the kernel, and then add that to a specific solution. The specific solution comes from Ax equals B, some specific actual B vector. That's what that is, and that equals the general solution. Um, why, or what this means, I really don't know. I died, and I haven't spent that much looking at it, cause it doesn't seem that important, but it doesn't really make sense to me. Like, why this is that? You call this the solution set? You call this the solution set? Um, and so if as you find a solution set, you got, you're looking for the basis for the kernel. And yeah, that's pretty much it, so.
Uh, I'm kind of in the same boat as you, but like, what I was thinking is that if it's a basis, and then you put a specific solution to it, I'll just give a general way of finding a specific solution. So like, if you rearrange this equation, you find that the basis is equal to the general solution minus the specific solution. So like.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's another way to look at it, yeah, yeah, yeah. Basis. Yeah. It like, it like, kind of makes sense, I feel like it almost makes sense. Because like, this, yeah, this exam has like, a general solution seems like it should work generally for a, for a whole, the whole, all of the matrix A, right? And so just like a line in R three is a point, and then a direction. It feels like this is kind of that thing, the point and then the direction, right? Um, and so it's any, anything on that line would be a, uh, would be a, uh, general solution. Would be part of the general solution.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Right? But that doesn't really make sense, like, it like, kind of makes sense, but it doesn't like, uh, to me at least, it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah.
Then our solution is the, is the solution for, also for the zero back.
Yeah, for everything include, yeah, for everything.
That the specific solution is. I don't know.
The specific solution is just for one specific B value, you, you choose any one. Any B value. So let's do an example, here, I have an example in here. Um, find the general, so here's, uh, again, just from Horowitz's lecture, so A, uh, is, I should do it a different color. A is, um, uh, three, one, two, negative one, 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 oh, three, negative two, oh, one, negative two. Okay, that's our A. Um, so we want the general solution to Ax, to Ax equals five, five, negative three. So we want the general solution to this. Right? So, um, while we find the, remember the general solution is the basis for the kernel plus a specific solution. This will be the specific solution, and that equals the general solution. So let's find the basis for the kernel, right? So if I take this and put in RREF. R, R, E, F, I think I have it here already, yep. So it's one, zero, zero, a half, zero, one, zero, five halves, zero, zero, one, negative one. Yeah. And so. Why by negative? Okay, it's fine. Oh yeah, okay, nevermind, actually, sorry, so X equals, X equals, um, uh, negative a half. Wait. Oh, sorry, this is a T, this is a free value, variable, so sorry, it's W equals T, right? Yeah, W equals T. Yeah. So, although that, oh yeah, that's what I said, sorry, I'm just getting confusing myself a little bit, okay? So negative a half, T, Y equals negative five halves, T, Z equals T, W equals T. And so we could say this is negative a half, negative five halves, one, one. And that's a basis for the kernel. We are actually allowed to multiply this by two, uh, so it'd be negative two, uh, negative one, negative five, two, two. Um, we're allowed to multiply because it's a basis, so the span of a basis is the same as the span of the basis times some constant. Right, so like this. The, the span of this is the same as the span of, span of this. Right, it's just a line. So, yeah. So that's what we'll choose as our basis, so that's our basis for the kernels already here, negative one, negative five, two, two. Good. Uh, I'm gonna add that to a specific solution, so for a specific solution. Um. Well, somehow. Somehow he says, I, I mean, we can just solve it, we can just solve the specific solution, I don't really know why he said that, so.
Well, you can't really solve, it's R four, R three. Like, the kernel's four.
The kernels are, are for, yeah, um, but the solution to this, the solution to this will be in R four.
Oh, okay, okay.
The solution to that will be in R four, right? So if I just take, if I just take this matrix, right? And augmented with five, five, negative three, right? So same thing here, three, one, three, one, two, negative one, 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 zero, uh, three, and negative two, oh, one, negative two, and augment that with, uh, three, five, negative three, uh, five, five, negative three. Did I say recording? Yes, I did. Um, I mean, although the recording isn't that important here, but people probably won't watch it. Um, then I don't actually have the RREF for this. Although it'll be the same as that, but with the, yeah, I had to do it myself. So it's gonna be, um, I'll do, kind of do it over here, so, one, minus three, row two, row three, plus two, row two, so, um, zero. One minus three is negative two, two minus zero is two, negative one, minus nine, negative one minus nine is negative ten, five minus fifteen is negative ten. So zero there, one, one, zero, three, five, uh, negative two, plus two is zero, zero, plus two is two, one, plus zero is one. Negative two, plus six is four. Negative three, plus ten is seven. And I'll do row one, plus row two. Zero, zero, three, six, three, um, one, one, zero, three, five, zero, two, oh. I'll divide it, I'll divide it by two.
It's negative three, in the first line.
Yeah, let's, let's see where, negative? Here? Yeah. Ten plus, oh yeah, and then this will be, yeah, and this will also be. What did I do? Huh? Wait, hold on, one plus two, that's zero. That's two. What, how did I do this? Yeah, wait, what? That's zero, that plus that is two. So there should be a two there. That plus that is negative seven, what did I do? Wow, that plus that is negative five, I was just looking at different numbers? Oh, I was adding these numbers? Yeah, I was adding these numbers, the last row? I, I don't know why, okay. Um, yeah, thank you, that's good. So, um, there's that. And, um, now I'll do row two minus row three, so one, zero, negative a half, three minus two is one, five minus five halves is, um, uh, that's twenty-five, no, uh, ten halves minus five halves is five halves. Um. Oh, I didn't write the top row, wow, sorry, I'm not on my, not on my game today for some reason. Zero, one, a half, two, five halves. Okay, um, and then I'll, uh, I'll just keep. I don't know what row I'll keep, I guess I just keep, uh, this, no, I'll keep, oh no, I have to keep that row, that's, that's the only row I can keep, okay? So divide this by two, negative seven halves, negative five halves. So then I have to do row two plus a half, row one, row three minus a half, row one. So, I'll, uh, zero, zero, one, negative seven halves, negative five halves, one, zero, zero. This will be zero, one, zero. So, um, one plus seven, one minus seven fourths is one mu, one four, fourth minus seven fourths is negative three fourths, okay? Negative three fourths. Five halves plus five fourths. So ten fourths plus five fourths. Five fourths plus five, yeah, so fifteen fourths. Okay, um, two minus, it's two plus seven fourths. So, uh, eight fourths plus seven fourths is fifteen fourths.
Isn't it, uh, it shouldn't be fifteen over four, cause it's negative five over two, no?
Um, for which, for, um.
For, you wrote fifteen over, for the first one you wrote?
Here? Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, row two, so five halves. Yeah, five halves.
Isn't it ten over four minus?
Minus?
Uh, five over four.
Five over four, yeah, so ten over four. And over four should be five halves, maybe five fourths, yes. And did this one right too, or did I do this one? This one, I think the negatives cancel, although, wait, hold on. This was two plus seven fourths. So eight fourths, but that's right, that's, that's correct, this one's right. And then this one is five halves plus five fourths, so ten fourths plus five fourths, so this is fifteen fourths. Okay, there we go. So, um, the solution to this, I won't rearrange it, but it's okay, so this is just, um, W equals T. This is an augmented line, right? So we don't actually assign that, so X equals three over four, T plus five over four. Y equals seven over two, T, um, plus, uh, no, minus five over two. Z equals, um, negative fifteen over four, plus, uh, sorry, T plus fifteen over four. And, uh, so since we're looking for a specific solution, we actually just need a, need a number, so I'll just say T equals zero. Okay, and so my, oh, and sorry, W, W equals T, um, so. Yeah. So I'll, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll just say T equals zero, and so then our solution is five over four, negative five halves, fifteen over four, zero. So the general solution is this, plus the basis for the kernel, which was, uh, negative one, negative five, two, two. And that's the general, but that's, wait, hold on, I think there might be, have to be a T in the front of that.
I'm pretty sure for all general solutions, there should be a parameter.
Yeah, so I think it's just in front of this, because that's the, that's the basis thing, right? I don't have a good example of that.
When you're writing the solution, yes, but in the basis, like in the little squiggly brackets, you don't write the T. If that makes sense.
Like, he, you don't, you don't write it here?
No, here you write it, but then when you, um, put it like, basis of the kernel equals this, then you don't write it.
Oh yeah, like here, like when I wrote it, wherever I wrote it, I don't know where, oh, when I solved for it? I don't know. But is this, this would, this would be the answer for it, for the question?
No, you'd write this, and then, uh, you'd write just the parameter, right? Without the T, as the basis.
Oh, okay. So negative one, negative five, two, two, plus the, plus the specific solution. Which is, uh, oh, which is here, five over four. Negative five over two.
I, I think I had the Y and Z values mixed up.
Did I?
I think, yeah, unless I'm, unless I'm missing something. Cause isn't Z supposed to be seven over two? Instead of Y? Seven over two T?
Why, yeah, I did, yeah. There. So.
It's okay, man, it's early.
Yeah, I was about to say.
Yeah, so.
I came late for you.
So yeah, so there's this. So, uh, Z, they just flipped these. This is just, this is negative five over two, and this is fifteen over four. Uh, yeah, and this is fifteen over four, this is negative five over two, times zero. Was zero. And I guess that that's the general solution. And, yeah, actually, I didn't, I, I didn't write the final answer to Horowitz's example for some reason, I must've just like, got distracted or something. So. I don't actually see the form that it's supposed to be written at the end, but yeah, generally that. Equal to, um, T of X equals B.
So which one is the, the solution to Ax equals B?
That's this one.
Okay. Then the gen, the general solution is just supposed to be like the kernel.
The general, the general solution is this whole thing. The, the, uh, the, uh, solution set is the kernel, it's called the solution set.
Homogeneous system, right?
To the homogeneous, yeah, yeah.
Can I see the, are, uh, the, this, uh, the matrix, because?
The end here, this one?
Up, up, yeah, that is, is, is completely wrong from my, but it's, or I need to see what I.
Well, I, I mean, it's a possibility that I made a mistake, so.
All right, but if it's correct.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's right, I mean, I gave it, gave it my best shot.
Wait, I have Horowitz two, can you scroll?
From my notes, the general solution has like, the S and T parameters too. Like, if you're associated, associated homogeneous system, like the Ax equals zero, if it has any parameters, you just, you just combine the particular homogeneous system, and that's the general, the, the general.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me look in the, let me look in the thing here. At the solutions for like, the stuff in the textbook. Yeah, it does, it does say that, so it's, oh, it writes it like this, yeah, yeah, it writes it like this. Oops, it's the wrong one. Uh, it writes it like this, you put the Ts inside, yeah, okay, that's probably what you're saying.
Oh, you don't have to do that, like, you could put outside, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand the same thing, but all of them seem to have it like this, so maybe that's like how they want you to write it for this one? I understand it's the same thing as it, as if you just put it out here.
I sent you the Horowitz one that he did. It, the T goes in front of the one that, uh, you got from the null space, so yeah, you did, you did it correctly.
Oh yeah? Let me just see when? Yeah, okay, 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 I didn't, uh, if I have a pencil, I just like, I wrote, I wrote, general solution is one, 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 plus, and then I didn't get what it was after that. Oh, and also, one, 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 one is not the number we got at the end here. One, five, one, one, by three. So I don't know what was going, yeah, hold on, that, one, one, one is not the answer we got here for the, for this specific solution. He didn't actually do the RREF. He did, he just said, at the end.
He just uses insane math skills to give you that one, 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 and he doesn't give the.
Seriously, he just said, he just, literally all he wrote was notice, notice, A of one, 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 one equals the thing that we're looking for, uh, five, five, negative three.
Yeah, he can walk with that, I don't know what she did and how she got her, she just wrote notice, I was like, what?
Notice what?
Yeah.
Yeah, when you see, I just noticed things like this.
Well, I guess he would notice, you would, I guess that means that you sum these rows together, so three.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, I guess so, five on the top, five, and then negative three.
Just put notice, RREF equals this on the text.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Don't show your work.
Just notice it, they can notice it, they're good.
Yo, can you go over the, and, and sort this one?
Can I go to what, sorry?
The steps, like.
Yeah, well, so just generally, all it is, is, is you're given a matrix, you find the kernel of it. Right, you find the kernel, the null space, and then you find a specific solution of it. Right? So, that's what, that's all it is, so you take the, and you take the basis for the kernel, like one of these vectors, so here, that's what I did first. So basis for the kernel, put in RREF equal to zero, right, it's a homogeneous system, so there's a bunch of zeros here, right? We don't write it. And just solve for XYZ. So I did that, and I got this basis, which I multiplied by two. This basis here, right? And then, um, what I did. Yeah, and then, so that's, that's the first part that I need, I need, I needed this here, and then I need a specific solution. So it gave me a, a vector that I want to solve for, right? So I just tried to start, started solving for that, I made the homogeneous system, not the homogeneous, I made the, uh, augmented matrix with the vector there, and then just went to RREF and solved for XYZ.
Oh, so you have to do for both, um, Ax equals zero and Ax equals whatever B they give you.
And notice, you, you need a specific number solution, so I just chose T equals zero, at the end.
Okay.
Shows T equals zero, and then, uh, uh, and which is just like the simplest one, and then, yeah.
Yesterday you did like the kernel, which is the X equals zero, and then you did the same, the original function equal to the specific function that they gave you? And then you did RREF for that? Okay.
And then just chose T equals zero, that's the only, that's the only thing that's like kind of different, is that I, you can choose a number? And that goes here?
Did you do that because the, um, RREF is too hard because of the fractions, or?
Well, just because, I did that because you need a number, you know, it's, it's, it's like you need the specific solution to this one. So it doesn't want just like all the solutions, it wants actually a specific number. Just like when you're, just like, again, when you're drawing a line, you want a point and a direction. You don't want a whole range of points, you need a specific point and a specific direction. Right? This is this, this is the specific point and the specific direction. But yeah, so although, even though I don't really understand what's going on here, like, I can do it, because it's not, it's not like crazy, it's just solve two systems.
Solution you converted into RREF?
Yeah, yeah, I started here with this, just with this matrix, and then, yeah, I turned that into, I just put in RREF.
And why does it look like it?
Well, I just didn't flip the row, the rows are not in the right order, I should, I should, uh, yeah, uh, swap these two rows. Should swap, swap these two rows, and then, once that's done, swap these two rows. A, after, after this one, though, right? But.
Yo, just be, the, the kernel is the X equals zero, um, the RREF off that, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And you're gonna have a free variable, and it's the, so it's the, the vector of the free variable. Right?
Okay.
It's like, see, here I did it, and I got all for just a free variable here, so then the, the basis is just the coefficients in front of those Ts. And then since it's a basis, you can, I just multiply by two to make it simpler.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, so you need, you, you need to add W, because.
Well, yeah, cause it's X, it's XYZ, and I just used W for the next one, right? I used W for the, for the last column, there has to be a variable every column.
Hey, thank you.
Good, good. So, I think we should move on, because there's other stuff to get to, right? Um, put this over here, that's, this. Um, so, yeah, so yesterday we already talked about eigenvalues and eigenvectors. When we do diagonalization, we're still doing eigenvalues and eigenvectors, so if you're, want more explanation on that, then, um, you know, we can do that. Um, the last thing from seven point one is just to say, um, that two matrices can be similar. Yeah.
Ab, about the similar thing, I don't know who, I don't know why Horowitz did this, but he put a, for, uh, for the, for the similarity type thing, he, there's a bunch of properties of it, he only included two at the end of, uh, seven point one, and then he included like four more at the start of seven point two for some reason. He's like, split them up, so you might wanna include.
Oh, really? Well.
Yeah.
I don't know why, yeah, that is strange here, let's see, let's see what I have here, cause I have them written too, um. Um. Look at the trace. Well, actually, I don't have any in seven point one, unless I just didn't write, no, I must've written them. I have like a few properties of similarity, yeah, he should've just put it all in one chapter, I don't know why it wasn't all in one chapter, but, yeah, I guess he did. He, he introduced it in seven point one, gave one property, and then put the rest of the properties in seven point two. Yeah, yeah. So, but anyway, so, uh, the, the last thing from seven point one is just, um, that two matrices can be similar. And what that means, okay, so if, if A is similar to B, that's how you write that, um, then there exists a matrix C, an invertible matrix, so that you can write this, uh, sorry, B equals C inverse A C. Um, and, uh, that's like a very specific thing, so, but it's, it's just like, it's kind of weird to look at, but like, it's literally just like, you want a matrix that does this. That, like, if you could find a matrix that makes this happen, right? You can take any matrix A, any matrix B, if there is a C that is invertible, that lets this happen, then they're similar. It's like a very specific definition. Right? Um, but it's not like, uh, yeah, so that, that's that. The interesting thing about A and B is that they're gonna have the same eigenvalues. And eigenvectors. And eigenspaces, obviously, but that's the same thing. And eigenspaces, obviously, but that's the same thing as eigenvectors, so, um. Oh, with the same, with the same multiplicities too. With same multiplicities.
Is it also eigenvectors, because Horowitz didn't mention that, he said only eigenvalues and multiplicity.
Oh, I guess maybe it doesn't have to be, I guess I assumed it has to be, but yeah, no, I guess it doesn't have to be the same eigenvectors too. Yeah, it does, it does just say eigenvalues.
It doesn't make sense for them to, if it's the same eigenvalues, wouldn't it be the same eigenvectors?
I guess not necessarily. Yeah, like, you, you can have two different matrices that stretch some eigenvectors by two or something like that, and they would be different eigenvectors. So, and that would still. But if they're similar, that makes me seem like they're more connected, but they don't have, I guess they don't have to be, they don't have, they don't have to have the same eigenvalues, uh, eigenvectors. That's pretty much it, he does do one example, if you wanna find. Uh, if you wanna find the eigenvalues of a matrix, a diagonal matrix. So like, if you have a diagonal matrix, it's like, well, I'll use the example he did, one, three, two, negative two. One, zero, and it's like, whatever, whatever here, right? And anything at all. One, two, three, four, five, and it's all zeros here. Right? Whatever, I, I will write everything, then the eigenvalues are just, just that, those are the eigenvalues, with the multiplicities and everything. Right, so. That's it.
They're probably not gonna ask us about elementary matrix, right?
Elementary ma- matrix, like, uh, no, I don't think so. They're not gonna, they're not gonna talk about that, because that's like, he did talk about that for a bit, but it wasn't like, I don't think it was part of the con- like, yeah, it wasn't part of the content, so. It was just like, um, that's also like kind of more of a, like a mixing chapter one and chapter. Five together, cuz to figure out how, how does the row operations work? So, yeah, so no, no, they, they won't, that's not part of the, any section.
Beginner way of finding the eigenva- values though. You use elementary matrix, make the original matrix into a triangular matrix, and then you find the eigenvalues, that was the point.
Oh, do this, like, uh, but with that. Would that, are you, I don't, I don't have it written here that you're allowed to change something into an upper triangular, and it would still be the same eigenvalues.
Well, that's what they said, they were, they just chose an identity matrix, did one operation on it. Then, um, did the similar matrix stuff, all the similar matrices, we just learned it, like B equals C inverse A C. So C is just the, I, C is just the elementary matrix.
No, I don't thi- I, I don't have, yeah, and I also don't like have that written here anywhere, so, I, I guess. Yeah, so I guess Horowitz just didn't talk about that, that exact pers- specific thing, all he said about this kind of matrix was this, literally just this. Right? That's that, as far as I wrote, so, yeah. Uh, then there is a complex eigenvalue, um, question, but I think we should just skip it, cuz he said that it won't be on the test, complex numbers. Right, so.
Wait, wait, Horowitz said that complex won't be on it?
Well, he said, he can't imagine that he, that they would ever ask us to do that on a test.
How would he say they when he is?
Not in general, just in a matrix.
Yeah, in like, as an eigenvalue, as an eigenvalue.
Feel like there's a mole in this chat.
So do you think I, do you think I should do that, the complex one?
Considering, considering his track history, I'd, I'd say.
Have all their stuff to cover.
I think it's, it's not gonna do the complex number.
I don't, I also don't think so, yeah.
I think they really need people to pass, so they're definitely not.
Yeah, they gotta get.
Not that much more complicated.
It's not, it's not, it's not, okay, so I'll move on to diagonalization then, okay?
Let's go.
So, uh, there's just a few other definitions before that, so it's just like some other things, so the trace. The, so this is seven point two now. Um, there's a def- something called a trace, so the trace of the matrix A is the sum of the diagonals. In any form, yeah, just any, it doesn't have to be upper triangular or anything like that. Yeah, it's just the sum of the diagonals. Okay, um, then there's some properties about trace, but it's pretty much what you'd expect. Then, there's some properties about similarity, which probably is worth to say, so if, if A and B. Are similar, the, oh, A and A, A and B are similar. Then, um, determinant of A is equal to the determinant of B, the rank of A is equal to the rank of B. The trace of A is equal to the trace of B, and the uh, uh, the, what's it called, the polynomial, the uh. Characteristic polynomial, the like, when you do the eigenvalues, when you put the minus lambda for the diagonals. And you get a polynomial at the end, that's, that's called the, call it the characteristic polynomial, their characteristic polynomials are the same, which means they have the same eigenvalues. So then, uh, A is, A is diagonalizable. A is diagonalizable, uh, if it's similar. Similar. To a diagonal matrix. Right, with just a, just a uh, diagonal of eigenval- or, well, diagonal of values going down, down the diagonal. So basically how you do this, and so diagonalization is, is like, it's just a thing you do to, to, to a matrix. And it's pretty much just ri- rewriting it, like you have A, and you're rewriting it in a kind of more complex form, so you write it as P inverse. A, P equals D, which is what I just set up here, is, is the similarity, just with different letters. Right, so it's, we're showing that it's similar to some matrix D, um, and that matrix D has to be a diagonal matrix, right, well, sorry. That's X's. And these are zeros, right, it doesn't have to be three by three, but it can be any size, but yeah, it has to be a diagonal matrix. A is the matrix A. So essentially, we're finding P and D, that's pretty much what we're finding, when we say diagonalize, you're just trying to see what, what matrix D. That is diagonal is A similar to, and what is the diagonalizing matrix?
And D can be, can be written as uh, the identity matrix times the eigenvalue?
I guess so, yeah, I, I guess it could, you could write it as the identity matrix times the eigenvalues as a vector. Usually not written like that, uh, but that would work, it's the same thing, it's the same, yeah, that, that would be the same thing. So, the, the different eigenvalues, right, but, or actually, sorry, eigen, two, three, but. Uh, just, yeah, we'll get to that in a second, about like how you make D and P, right? So, it turns out that, uh, well, I guess I'll get to it now, that uh, P. Is a matrix, so if, if, uh, let's say this is three by three, let's say we're all on three by three here, okay, and let's say A has, um. Three eigenvectors, or three eigenspaces, the first basis is one, two, five, two, six, seven, and negative three, negative one, one. Let's say these are, and just like assume these are linearly independent and all that, whatever, right? So these are the, uh, these are the basis for the three eigenspaces, then P, oh, and this, let's say this, this had an eigenvalue of three. Eigenvalue of negative two, eigenvalue of five. So, once you figure this out, right, once you find the eigenvalues and eigen, eigenvectors, right? Uh, we can create P, so P is gonna be, let's just take the, let's, you, you just order the, these ones, in actually whatever order, right? So, one, two, five, two, six, seven, negative three, negative one. Negative one, one, that's P, and D is gonna be, uh, the eigenvalues, but you have to match up the order properly, so this one, the first one was three. So three goes there, zero, 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 next one was, next one was negative, uh, was this one, so negative two goes there. Zero, 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 and then the next one was five, which was, which matches with that one, so five goes there. And there you go. So now, that, that's the final answer, it's diagonalized, we figured out what diagonal matrix it was similar to, and we figured out the diagonalizing matrix. And so that's the answer. Of course, I skipped a bunch of steps because I just made up all these numbers, right, but, uh, yeah. So of course, we'll do an example, we'll do an actual example now. Have a question, someone have a question?
No, never mind.
So. Uh, should we do a two by two example, or should we do a, should I just jump right to a three by three example?
We should do what we probably gonna get, four by four.
Twelve by twelve, maybe. So.
I think three by three would be probably all good.
I think we'll get a three by three, yeah, I think, I also think. So.
More likely, it's probably a four by four.
Yeah, and now I'm kind of worried about that, yeah, I was just thinking, seems like it might be.
He said if he was gonna give you anything above a three by three, it's going to be with some simplifying characteristics.
Yeah, that's true, he did say that.
So, so that's probably like a good way to know that if you're doing the question right, if things are simplifying, simplifying out a lot, right? You should probably be on the right track.
Okay, so, our question is diagonalize this, so first, we have to find the eigenvalues and the eigenvectors. So I will find the determinant of a lambda taken off, well, I'll just call it X, cuz lambdas are harder to draw, but same thing. Um, negative six, one minus X, six, one, five, four. Determinant equals zero, uh, so I will, you know, you can do row operations, whatever, I'll just, I'll just go for it, um, or is there any quick row operation? Yeah, I guess there is.
I didn't get to down the entire, the, the matrix, sorry.
Yeah, I also just, I also just forgot to put the X on the four down here, yeah, so. Um, I will do row two minus row one. So, uh, negative X, negative five, six, uh, negative six plus X is. Negative six plus X, one minus five plus five is six minus, I said that wrong, one minus X plus five. Is six minus X, and six minus six is zero, one, five, four minus X, so the determinant of that. I will, uh, expand like this. So it's six times the determinant of negative six plus X, five. Six, well, you know, I'll, I'll just jump right to the actual, finding the determinant of that, so, six times, five times negative six plus X. Um, minus six minus X. Plus, four, minus X times, uh, negative X times six minus X. Um, plus, uh, five times negative six plus X. So, this six times, uh, negative thirty plus five X minus six plus X. Yep, plus, four minus X, negative six X plus X squared. Minus thirty X plus five X. So then I'll, uh, just combine this with me, so six, six X, um, minus thirty six. Um, plus four minus X. X squared minus thirty six, no, minus thirty one X. Oh, is that not supposed to be a X, that's not supposed to be an X there? Yeah, so then this is just, uh, one X, or minus one X. Minus thirty. Do the rest of that right? Negative six X, X squared, negative thirty, five X, yep, that's right. So then this is thirty si- thirty six X minus, uh, I don't know what thirty six times six is, two hundred and sixteen. Plus, four X squared minus four X, uh, minus, uh, hundred and twenty. Um, minus X cubed plus X squared plus thirty X equals zero. So then this is, uh, I'll put the negative X cube, seems like it's always a negative X cube, I don't really know why, but, yeah, negative X cubed. X squareds. Um, then we need the X terms. Raise that there, so it's thirty six plus thirty is sixty six minus four is sixty two. Sixty two X. And then. Two sixteen, a hundred and twenty, and that's it, so negative two sixteen minus a hundred and twenty is negative three hundred and thirty six. Equals zero, and let's hope I get some nice solutions for this. So, negative one, five, sixty two, negative three, three, six. Yes, I do get nice solutions for this, X equals negative eight, seven. And six, and since I got three solutions, I know they all have a multiplicity of, of one, I don't have to try to figure that out. Right? So. Um, now that I know that, I know my eigenvalues, right, so my eigen. Eigen one equals negative eight, eigen two equals seven, eigen three equals six. So now I find the eigenspaces, so I go back up to this, this matrix, like this right here, and I'll copy that. And then I, um. I, uh, plug in my eigenvalues that I got, so, let's start here, so it's gonna be eight. Eight, negative five, six, negative six, one plus eight is nine, six, one, five. Four plus eight is twelve, and then I solve for the null space. Right, solve for the null space of this, and I think, hopefully, assuming I got the right eigenvalues, negative eight. Six, seven, yeah, we're good, so I'll, I'll just, I'll just do what, uh. I'll just use what, uh, like, Horowitz it, so in R R E F. Um, for negative eight, that is.
Thank you forever for doing the R F.
Thank you for, yeah, for not doing it, yeah, it's, it's, uh, not very necess- I would rather not do it at all, so, uh, luckily I.
You know, Adam, did I just forget, or did Horowitz just mention the fact that, um, an image exists? But never did, never like. Used it again, like in after, like he, like mentioned it, like, none of this, like, has anything to do with images, like an image of a.
Um, I don't have an image written here anywhere, I don't know, maybe I wrote it on.
He, he mentioned it this one time, right, again, like, wh- when he met, when he mentioned the kernel, but then he didn't. There's a whole section of it, the kernel and image, but he never uses image again.
Oh, that's true, yeah, I don't know, he did, that's actually, yeah, he did say image multiple times, cuz I, even when I was doing this stuff yesterday. Um, and the day before, right, it was like, I, I, I like saw that I was saying, explaining what an image was multiple times, it's like, oh, we already did this, I don't know why it's here again. So, no, he didn't use it again after that, so, I guess just maybe the textbook, how the textbook had it set up. Or like, he wanted to explain something sooner, so he explained it first, and then the textbook explained it after, so. Maybe that's what happened, I don't know. Um, okay, so the R R E F of this is this, so X equals negative two T. Y equals a negative two T, Z equals T. So it's negative two, negative two, one is the basis for this one. Similarly, so this was for, this was for lambda, e- lambda one equals, uh, negative eight, right, now let's do the same thing for. Wow, lambda two equals, um, what was it, lambda two, seven. Well, the matrix I get for that is, um. Well, the matrix I get for that is, um. Here, I'll just, I'll actually just do it, so, for seven, it'll be negative seven, negative five, six, negative six. One minus seven is, uh, negative six, six, one, five. Four minus seven is negative three. Okay, and then in RREF. This is, um, this is, uh, one, zero, negative a half. Zero, one, a half. Zero, 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 so a basis for our kernel is x equals a half, y equals negative a half. Uh, sorry, t, t, z equals t, so a half, negative a half, one. Which, um, I can choose, yeah, which I can just choose to multiply by two. Although he didn't write negative, oh no, they were both negative, sorry, these are both negative, so then these are both positive. And then I can just choose to multiply that by two, so it's gonna be one, one, two. So that's my eigenspace for lambda two, and this was my, this was my, um, eigenspace for lambda one. Okay, and then finally for lambda. Three, lambda three is, um, uh, six. So it's going to be negative six. Um, negative five, six, negative six. Negative six, so then it's gonna be, um, one minus six, one minus six is negative five. And. Yeah, uh, where am I, uh, six, one, five. And four minus six is negative two. Okay, and then put that, put that in RREF. And it looks like this. Looks like this, it looks like, one, zero, zero, one, zero, zero. Negative four over five, negative six over twenty five, zero, yes. So a basis for our null space is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be x equals four over five t. Y equals six over twenty five t, and z equals t. So four over five, someone's got their mic on, and are shuffling, shuffling around. Maybe could they, could they mute?
Sorry.
Don't worry, don't worry. So, um, yeah, here, four over five, and then I can just multiply by twenty five, here, right? So it's going to be, uh, twenty, six, twenty five. Right, yeah. Okay, and so that's our eigenspace for lambda three. So now that we have all our three la- uh, eigenspaces, we can create the two diagonalize the two matrix from diagonalization. So P is the diagonalizing matrix, it's gonna have, um, things, the columns of lam- e lambda one. E lambda two. E lambda three, that's the columns. Right? Uh, and D is going to have a, uh, all zeros. And in the diagonal, it's gonna be lambda one, lambda two, lambda three. Okay, and so let's just do that, so, let's put in the correct ones. So for P. E lambda one. Negative three, negative two, one. E lambda two was one, two, one, one, two. And e lambda three was twenty six, twenty five. Um, and then D is just gonna be our eigen, eigenvalues, right, so lambda one was, uh, negative eight. Negative eight, zero, 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 seven, zero, 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 six. There's all eigenvalues. And so we've diagonalized A.
Wait, if D is a diagonalization of A, then what's P again?
P is the thing that is doing the diagonalization. Right?
If A gives you D.
Yeah, so, so, P inverse, A, P, equals D. Right, so that's.
They ask you to find the P inverse, if they are wicked enough, yes?
Uh, well, they might, on- only if they actually say, show, only if they say after this, like, show that this is true, or something like that. So to show that it's true, you would actually do this multiplication, and show that it actually equals D.
So I have to first do like A of P, and then do the inverse of P onto that.
Whatever order you want, you can, you could do this order too if you want, and then multiply, but. Yeah, yeah, I would like, I would do it like this.
See, that's where they're gonna use the Kramer's rule question, that just clocked, cause P inverse, like, use Kramer's rule to solve that.
Oh, or, or use the, yeah, 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 or use the, like, the, the formula for the inverse there, for the Kramer's.
Worth only ten marks. Like fifty more question itself.
Well, ten marks is, well, it's, it's like, that's like how much normal questions are worth, right?
No, if we have to find the eigenvectors, and then we have to do diagonalizable, after that, they ask us to use Kramer's rule on top of that, how is that worth ten marks?
Professor, like, you're right, five marks.
Yeah.
It's a matter of perspective, for them, how difficult is for them?
They've been doing math for ten years, got the PhD, and they're chilling right now, so.
And just the problem, right?
This is so easy, what do you mean?
Exactly. They'd be like, oh, this is so easy.
So, one qu- one thing about this is like, sometimes it's not diagonalizable, right, sometimes you cannot do this, and, which means that. A is not similar to a diagonal matrix D, and how you'd be able to tell in the process of doing this, is that. Um, notice that we, um, we got three distinct eigenvalues, each one had an algebraic multiplicity of one. Right, they all showed up once, and then when we go into RREF, each null space had a dimension of one. Right, each null space had, and that's fine, that, that, that means it works, because those things match up. And so then if you had, for example, let's say we got, uh, negative eight, negative eight and six, as our, as our lambdas. Then it wouldn't be diagonalizable anymore, because when we do our negative eight, uh, row reduction, we only get a dimension of one. If it was diagonalizable, you would get a dimension of two, you get another vector here, like three, five, six, or whatever, right? So if that doesn't show up, if it doesn't, if it doesn't match up, so this is the geometric multiplicity, how many dimensions in the null space, how many basis vectors? Um, the algebraic multiplicity is the number of times it actually shows up as a solution. Because also think about it, like, if you went to the end here. Right, you need to have things that match up, right, so we had this one, and there was, there was one dimension, we had this one, there was one vector. This one, there was one vector, but let's say you got, let's say you got negative eight twice, right, let's say you got negative eight twice. But then you only got one dimension in your null space, you wouldn't have a vector to put in the middle here. You wouldn't have another one, but let's say you, let's say you did get two dimensions, you just put the other vector here, three, five, six, or whatever, whatever I said before. Just made up, made up vector, right?
In that case, it'd still be diagonal.
Yeah, now it's, it's still diagonal, as long as you can make these two matrices at the end, then it's diagonalizable.
Okay.
Right? And just, you just gotta watch out that these match up, right, so when you put a negative eight here, it has to be a vector for the negative eight space. And you put a negative eight, this also has to be a vector for the negative eight, and this one has.
Back into, if I multiply A back by this, I should get this, right?
Yeah, well, let's, let's, let me go back quickly to how it actually was, it's just, let me just. There, that's a seven, yeah, right, so, um, yeah, if, if you were to multiply. What was that, was that a twenty? If you were to multiply A by, well, technically multiply this by A, this by A, and then that quantity by P inverse, you will get D.
Oh.
Right, so, A times P.
Sorry, that's just arising experience.
Yeah.
Why is everything, yeah. Okay, I get it, but like, in this situation, we have P and A, or we're given A, but like, also one of us, we have to find P inverse using, uh, whatever. If they ask.
Formula, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Then they, they might, you, they might ask, I don't know, uh, you can also, like, if they don't say how, you can just do the identity matrix thing, right? You can do the.
Yeah.
Put it, put it here, put, um, put the identity matrix here, and then if you do RREF, and you get identity matrix, and this is.
Wait, what, what's here, what's on the left right here?
Is, uh, uh, P, P would go there.
Okay.
Right, so this is P. And that would be P inverse, yeah, should probably not do.
If we're asked to use the formula for the inverse, do- does that mean we have to find the cofactor?
Yes, yes.
Cofactor matrix?
Yes, and then, and then take the transpose of that, right, and take the transpose of that.
And then one over the determinant, right?
And then one over the term, times the transpose of the cofactor matrix, yeah.
Okay.
So that's pretty much it from seven point two as well, I mean, we can do more examples if you want, um, maybe let's, let's like, let's get through seven point one, um. Nine point one, and then on the test, well, on the actual practice test, we'll do some, uh, some more practice of it, right, we'll do some actual, like, uh. More practice of diagonalization, um. But yeah, so if everyone's good, I'll move on to nine point one.
I think that means move on.
No, no, I, uh, that doesn't mean move on, I'm just looking, looking at the notes, yeah, just looking at my notes here for a second. Okay, yeah, these are very long examples, so I don't know, maybe, I guess, I guess it is worth the time for me to go through one whole thing of, uh. Uh, vector spaces, like proving something's a vector space. Yeah, okay, although you won't be asked to do the whole thing, you might be asked to do one part of proving something's a vector space, so that's why it's, uh. Still pretty, like, an important thing to know how to do for the test, so, um. That's there, okay, so abstract vector spaces, it's pretty much that, uh, vectors don't have to be lines, right? Vectors don't have to be lines, they don't have to be sets of numbers. Uh, they don't have to be, uh, the thing you call, they don't have to be the symbol, right? They can, they're just anything that, that pass these rules, pretty much, and if they pass these rules, they're part of a vector space. And so the rules are, um. Um. Oh, did I write this properly? Yeah, I did write this properly. So, the rules are, I'll just, I'll write the, write the rules, it'll take one second, like, it'll take a, maybe two minutes to write out the rules, so, but it's, it is worth to have, actually, visible. So the first rule is that it has to have addition, right, so I'm gonna write addition, well, I'll write addition as a plus here. But when I actually write it, I'll write it a little differently, so, addition has to be defined, um, and you, you, you write it like this. V cross B equals V, right? Um, technically, because of how Horowitz wrote it, the sixth rule, but there's a reason, is that multiplication has to be defined. Doesn't like me doing that, does it? That, yes, multiplication has to be defined, which is R, which is a real number, and a vector gets a vector. Okay, oh, sorry, that's technically the sixth, again, that's the sixth rule. Nope, doesn't want me to go to. Well, that's fine, we'll just do it in this order then, uh, the second rule is, um, that it's commutative, right? So this one, I'll just write it, cause it's a little bit easier, so, if you have, uh, a vector U. Plus a vector V, uh, vector. V, that has to be equal to a vector U. Sorry, a vector V, plus a vector U, right? Um, go right like that. Um, then it has to be. Ah, ah, I like him here. Okay, then it has to be also, um. Uh, associative, which is, um, that. U. Plus. V plus W, has to be equal to U plus V. Plus W. Okay. Um, five, um, for every V, for every vector U, there is a vector V. Yeah, uh, so, uh, there, so for every vector U, there exists a V, there exists a V. Kind of, that's what that means, uh, such that, um, uh, U. Plus V equals V plus U equals zero. You call, you say that, uh, um. V equals negative U, in that case. Right? Then, number six, there's ten rules, so we're halfway through, but some of them are much faster to write. Um. Then there is, uh. You, oh, I missed one, um, so then there's, there's, uh, there's number, so I'm kind of doing it out of order now, but it's okay. For every U, there exists, uh, Z, right, such that. U plus Z equals Z plus U equals U. So Z equals the zero vector, oh, I shouldn't write like that, Z equals the zero vector. Um, and then, uh. The next ones. Are relating to the multiplication, yeah, so they're, so the multiplication has to be associative, although, I give up on typing, so, the multiplication has to be associative, so. Uh, a scalar R, times a scalar T, times U. Has to be equal to scalar R times T, normal multiplication, times. Um, U. Right? Um, number eight is that, um, R dotted with. U, uh, plus V has to be equal to R dotted with U. Um, plus. Uh, um, V dotted, uh, no, sorry, plus R dotted with V, those are, they're on things. And, did I miss one? Oh, and then there's a, the, this is distributive, it's also right distributive, so, I won't say that, that's, technically, that's. Nine, but the other way, and then, ten is that one dotted with U equals U. Okay, so those are the ten criteria, now, notice the, the things get, the rules get bigger and bigger, just because my writing gets worse and worse. Every time, but those are the ten rules, if you can come up with some definition of a vector, right? So if you can come up with, figure out, like, how would you write a vector? Vector U, uh, vector V, vector U, whatever, right? Also come up with some definition of how addition should work, and some definition of how, uh, multiplication should work, and it passes all these ten tests. Then it's a vector space.
The, lo- lot, lot of definitions.
Yeah, right, so if you wanna prove something's a vector space, you have to prove all ten of these things. You have to prove all ten of these things.
Commutative, there is associative, there is a.
Yeah.
All the above.
All the above, right, so ev- everything, you know what, I, on, in hindsight, could have just, uh.
You don't have to, right, you just have to prove, um, preservation of scalar multiplication, addition, and, um. Identity, the inverse.
Well. Well, I mean, you can. You don't have to, what, sorry, what'd you say?
From my notes, like, Delkord said that you don't have to do ten things individually, you just have to prove four things, which basically, everything else is follow.
Yeah, quite possibly, I, I don't, I don't remember, like, Horowitz, he always did all ten, un- until one failed, pretty much.
Of course he did all.
Yeah, so, if, I mean, until something failed, then he just stopped, because you know it's not a vector space, but, yeah, here's the same rules, just written nicer.
And he also said that you can't do multiple conditions at once, so of course he's trying to screw us over.
Yeah.
He said you can't do multiple at once, but he did all ten, okay.
But no, he didn't do one, and he didn't do, like, he didn't try to, like, prove two of these rules in the same go, in the same, like, step. It was like always se- separately each step, each rule was its own step.
How long did he do these four ones, because then, how long did it take us?
Well, I mean, like, yeah, he did, like, he did, how many full examples, one full example?
One hour. One hour.
And then he did a bunch of examples where it failed. And then he did another full example, no, 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 and then he did a, he did just a bunch of examples.
I just clarify something, this test is two hours, right?
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect it to be different than that, yeah. So he also said that you will not get one where you're gonna, you're gonna be asked to prove all ten. But you might be asked to prove one or two of them, or something like that, right? Prove some, some things here, that something's a vector space.
Oh, okay.
Right? So.
Just for guys to know, from Delcourt, closed under addition and scalar multiplication, which we know already how to do. And then you have to prove the existence of the additive identity and the existence of um, additive inverse. If you do that, she said the rest of the six are just um, automatic.
Oh, so you.
Listen to Delcore, I did horrible on test one and two, so just gonna go with Horowitz.
Associative law, addition, and uh, commutative, you can use it together, so. So.
I mean, yeah, yeah, those, like that, those two are pretty close.
Yeah, it was so closer under addition, I think you can do it together, because if the associative is not working, it's, most likely the addition doesn't work.
The, the, the uh, the part that gets, not, there's not just one part that gets confusing, but, one of the parts that gets confusing is that the zero vector does not have to be zero, zero. Right? Um, also addition, addition, right, uh, addition, does not have to be defined as X plus uh, X one plus X two, Y one plus Y two, if we're in R two, right? Doesn't, does not have, it doesn't have, it can, but it doesn't have to. Just like scalar multiplication, does not have to equal R times X, and R times Y. I'm not really writing the full thing, but hopefully understand what I'm trying to say here, right? Right? So it, it does not have to, it does not have to be that.
What else?
Anything. So it could, you can define it literally any way. I can say, like, like, for example, like, I can say that X, vector, vector X, right, vector X plus vector Y, Y is, well, sorry, plus is equal to uh, one half X minus three Y all over X. I could just say that's what def- that's what addition is defined as, you just do that. Right? I guess you can't really say divided by, so I'll say uh, uh, to the power of two. And I could just say that that's, that's, that's what it is. That's what that addition is defined by. Just like I can say, multiplication X times Y, or actually, sorry, not multiplication of vectors, but R times Y, or something like that, or I'll do R times X. It, cause it's a scalar multiplication, can be defined as like, log base three of, of R, times uh, Y minus Y minus two Y. Right? And if I can, if I can define this, and it passes all tens, ten tests of a vector space, um, then it's a vector space. With that as a definition for addition, that as a definition for subtraction, and quite possibly, because of how addition is defined, um, the additive inverse, uh, with the additive um, uh, um, identity, does not have to be zero, zero, right? So uh, Z, which is the additive identity, does not, does not have to equal zero. It can equal zero still, but it probably will not. Right? Which is just like zero, 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 zero. Doesn't have to. Because it, because of how this is defined, it might be something else, it might be like three, five, and if you put that in, it won't change anything. Um, for example, if you define, if you define X, um, yeah, if you define, um. If you define X plus, I'm trying to think of an example that someone sent me before, uh, X plus Y as X Y, right? Then the additive identity is the one vector, right? Is the one vector. Right? Because if you do X plus one, which is equal to X times one, that'll just be X. So in this case, the zero vector is the one vector. Guess I also can't write like that, so the zero vector is the one vector, or the, yeah. But the zero, so the zero vector is just the idea of something that doesn't, you can add it to something, and it doesn't change it. So it doesn't have to be zero, 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 whatever. That is what it has to be in R N, but not in any other vector space. Doesn't have to be in any other vector space. So let's do some actual examples. Should I do one all the way through, all ten points? I think I should.
So we can understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, like I could, yeah, so I can do, I'll do one example all the way through all ten. And uh, uh, just from Horowitz's lecture, just the one he did. And uh, yeah. And it is a vector space, so it passes all ten. So you'll see an example of every step, and then uh, I can also do some examples where it fails. So again, this is probably gonna be the one that takes a while. So. Let's start. So, example. I have a vector space. The vector space is uh, R two, okay? Addition, A B, plus C D is defined like this. A plus C minus one, oh, is this the one with the weird zero vector? Let me see, hopefully. Can't find it. Yes, it is good. So the addition is defined like this, A plus C minus one, uh, B plus D, minus two. So when I say add these two vectors, that's what you do. You don't do A plus C, B plus D, which is what you might expect, which is why this is a, this addition is written with a circle around it. It's not just the normal addition, we're defining addition a cer- a different way. This is the normal addition. You just literally add those together. But this is not the normal addition, that's why there's a circle around. Right? Um, and then scalar multiplication is defined like this. Scalar multiplication, R, scalar multiplied with A B, A B is equal to R A, minus R plus one, R B minus two R plus two. Okay, so again, you don't do R A, R B, right? That's not what you do. We've defined R dotted with A B to be this, something different. Right? So let's start. Uh, we have to prove that it's closed under addition, right? Which is what this kind of means, you take a, 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 vector in V, a vector in V, and you get a vector in V. So closed under addition, let's try to prove that, right? So if I have a vector A B here, and a vector A B here, um, well, the only cri- criteria for, for being, sorry, a vector A B and a vector C D, the only criteria for being in the vector space itself, is that it's in R two. So this is still in R two. Pretty sure that's all you need for that. And I will be checking here, yes. Right? So, so yes, it, it passes criteria one, be- because we're in R two. Because uh.
Sorry? But, what did you, can you repeat the?
Yeah, so. Is this what, sorry?
Is this like the general, like, writing, which if it's like a funk, uh, vector A B, it's gonna be A, plus C minus one, B plus D minus two, always?
Always, whenever you add two vectors in this vector space, that's what you're gonna do when you add them.
Okay.
Right? So the, the first thing is that it's closed under addition, which means when you take two vectors that are in the vector space, these two are in the vector space. Because the only criteria for being in the vector space is that you're in R two, right? So you take two vector, two vectors in the vector space, A B and C D, and you add them, you should still be in the vector space. Which we are, because again, the only criteria for being in the vector space is that you're in R two, and this is still a vector in R two. It has two coordinates. So, yes, so it passes, so it passes the first test. Okay, next one is that, um, it's um, well, yeah, so technically, closed under scalar multiplication is the sixth one, so we'll, we'll wait for that. Commutative. Right? So we have to prove that, we have to prove that A B, plus C D, equals C D, plus A B. Well, let's go for it. So S- A B plus C D is this, it's gonna be A plus C minus one, B plus D minus two. B plus D minus two. Okay? And this one is going to be C plus A minus one, D plus B minus two. I have to prove that these are the same things. Well, it's actually one, only one step away. So I can just rear, you know, mu- uh, normal addition itself, we know is, is commutative, right? So we can just say A plus C minus one, B plus D minus two, and now they are equal. So, yes, it passes number two.
Wait, that was a, which one, s- sorry.
That was commutative.
Yeah, yeah.
Commutative.
That's the first one.
Second. First one was closed under addition.
Okay, yeah.
Second one's commutative law. Next one's associative law. So we have to prove that V plus W plus Z. So I'll say A B, plus C D, plus E F, is equal to A B, plus, oh, sorry, there should be circles around these additions. Um, did I write circles up here? Circles around. Um, is equal to A B plus uh, C D, plus E F. Okay. So again, we just, we just try to like, do the addition, and see if you can rearrange them to look like the other side. So this is gonna be A plus C uh, minus one, B plus D minus two. Cause that's just, that's how we defined addition up here. Um, plus E F, is equal to, uh, is equal to, A B, plus, and then this is gonna be C plus E minus one, D plus F minus two. Okay, I guess you don't need brackets like that anymore. Okay, well, let's, let's get this. So this addition is gonna be A plus C minus one, plus E minus one, B plus D minus two, plus F minus two. Right? And this is gonna be A plus C plus E minus one, minus one, D plus, uh, sorry, B plus, D plus F minus two, minus two. Right? And we can, I'll rearrange this one to look like the other one. So uh, well, okay, yeah, so this is gonna be just A plus C plus E minus two, B plus D plus uh, plus F minus four. And this one I can write as A plus C plus E minus two, B plus D plus F minus four. Which is true. So it passes criteria three.
Uh, why did you do, uh, so I get the April, when you adding the two together, I, why did you um, like, also put in a one, like a negative one, like A plus C minus one, plus E minus one again, why did you put?
Because that's how we define addition. So you, it, it just means here, we take the first term, and the second term, first term and the second term, and then a minus one at the end. So the first term here was A plus C minus one, add the second term, and put a minus one at the end. Right? And then similar for the next one, is you take the, the bottom term, and the next term, and put a negative two at the end.
Oh, that's the condition, okay, sorry.
Makes sense? No, no, don't, don't apologize, yeah, good. I'm happy to understand.
Wait, can you explain that again?
Yeah. So we defined addition like this. We said, just don't even think about these as variables, think about this as like, first position of the first one, first position of the second one. So we take the, we take the first, yeah, try, different colors too. We take the first position of the first one, yeah, no, go for it.
Can someone volunteer to like, stop watching, so I can stream it on tutoring sort of number two, so other people can watch it? And then you can join that one?
Yeah, that, that works. How would you stream?
So I, I, I invited an alt account.
Oh, okay.
I'm just streaming it on either monitor.
Oh, wow, this guy, you got, you got a setup there, you got, that's, that's a pretty, pretty smart setup.
I just need to be able to watch it.
Yeah, okay, so I guess someone.
Sorry.
Good, okay. Are we good? Think so. So, um, yeah, so think about these vectors, this, this definition of addition is just saying, the first position of the first vector, the se- the first position of the second vector, minus one. And this is saying, I'll use a different color again, this is saying the, the uh, first, the second position of the first vector, plus the second position of the second vector, minus two. That's all we're, that's all we're saying here. And so I go to the actual thing, well, I just, I do exactly that. I say, I say the first position of the first vector, the first position of the second vector, first position of the first vector, first position of the second vector, minus one. And then the uh, second, right, and then the second position of the first vector, the second position of the second vector, minus two.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Right, no problem. So, oops, uh, was that supposed to be an E? Yeah, it's supposed to be E. Yeah, so, there you go. So we just do that for both sides, right? And then I can just show by just rearranging a little bit, and since we, again, since we, we know that normal addition, that is commutative, right? I hope I'm saying the right one, commutative, yeah, I think that's what it is. Um, since we know that, we can do this, right? So we assume that's been proven before, right? And so uh, uh, yeah, and so then you can just, you can just do that, and then rearrange, and there you go. So there's criteria three. Criteria four is where it gets kind of interesting. So criteria four, the existence of an additive identity. So, if I do A B, right, A B, plus zero, zero. Well, what this is gonna be, is it gonna be the first, so it's gonna be A plus zero minus one, B plus, B plus zero minus two. Notice, this isn't A B, this is A minus one, B minus two. Right? So we want, so, so zero, zero is not the zero vector, right? Not, the zero vector. Right? Which I call this, that's the zero vector. Right? Because if it was the zero vector, A B plus the zero vector should just be A B, this is what we're looking for, we wanted to, cause, cause, you know, two plus zero is two. So A B plus zero should be A B.
One.
Yeah, so what you're saying, up here, I put one?
One, one, no?
Well, one, one would be, again, almost right, because then it'd be, uh, this would be a one, so that would cancel, and this would be a one, so that would be negative one. Right? So, yeah, you're on the right, you're definitely on the right track, uh, but.
Two.
Yeah, so it is gonna be one, two, uh, but let's, let's figure it out, like, how you would actually do it without, cause sometimes it's not that easy to see, right? So.
Or they put sin, si- sine or something.
Yeah, right, so, well, yeah, they won't put sine, but uh, they will, they might do some other, like multiples or something like that, right? So let's figure out how you'd actually logically put this together. What we want.
Last time, they put sine or something, I.
Did they? In a, like sine, you're, you're saying like sine theta, or you're saying like a negative sine?
Sign or something, but it was on the roof or something, I don't.
I don't know, I don't know. What we want is A B plus C D, to equal A B. And essentially, we gotta just figure out what that C D is. We gotta figure out what C D, C D is. Sorry, added like that, added like that. So let's figure out what this is, so A plus C minus one, B plus D minus two. We want that to be equal to A B. And again, we're solving for C D, we wanna figure out what the zero vector is. Okay, well, this is A plus C minus one equals A, B plus D minus two equals B. Right? So these As cancel. And it's just gonna be C equals one, D uh, D equals two. Therefore, one, two, is the zero vector.
So um, basically, we're trying to find, uh, this, this one, this rule is like, we're trying to get it back to just A B, under addition, like addition wise?
That's what the zero. That's what the zero vector is, that's, that's the important thing. The important thing about the zero vector is not that it's zero, zero. The important thing is that you can add it to anything, and it's, you get, you get the same thing out.
So, if it's, if the rule is always A plus C minus one, wouldn't it always just be one, two, or like, how would this be different?
That's, this, this definition for addition and multiplication, that's this specific example. That's this specific thing, it can be anything.
They'll give us that then.
They'll, yeah, 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 they have, they have to give you the, the space, and they have to give you the definition for addition and multiplication. Right? And so, that's, that's like how you describe the vector space you're in, right? Or if, we don't know if it's a vector space, but the space you're in. And then to prove that it's a vector space, well, you have to go through all these steps.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you die?
Me?
His wifi probably.
Who's wifi?
Stream died.
We here.
Did it?
Uh, yeah, you know, they're clean.
No, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here still, I don't know, I don't know.
Oh my god. There's a freaking mall in this.
Did it, did it say, did it say something or? Oh, okay, hi. I didn't click anything, and I was, and I was good, I got it, like, my wifi didn't do, I don't know what happened, it just like. Decided to stop for some reason, I don't know. Um, good thing it didn't kick me out of the room, cause then, then it'd be, it'd be a little trouble.
Okay.
Good, you can see still, everything's good? Am I still, am I still recording, am I still recording? Wouldn't, wouldn't stop, yeah, okay. So, we've just proven that, uh, we've just proven the existence of the additive identity. So it passes number four, I'm pretty sure it's number four. So number four. Passes, we proved that there's an additive identity, and it is one, two, in this case. But just in this case, it's one, two, it's not always one, two. Right? Okay, and the last thing is we need to prove. That, uh, let's see what number five is. Existence of an additive inverse. Yeah, so we need to, we need to show that A B, A B. Plus, C D. Equals zero, zero. We need to show that there is a C D for whatever A B you choose. Right? We need to show that. Oh no, sorry, and it's not zero, zero, sorry. The zero vector is one, two. So we have to prove that that exists. So that's, that's the slight difference, is that you don't prove that it's A plus B is zero, zero. You, uh, A B plus C D is zero, zero, you prove that A B plus C D is the zero vector, which is one, two in this case.
So you'd actually have to solve for the zero vector first before you can actually solve.
Exactly, exactly, so step four doesn't make sense without step three.
Yeah, okay.
Step four doesn't make sense without step three. So, um, well, this isn't too bad, so we just say A plus C minus one. B plus D minus two, uh, equals one, equals two. Right? So, we just solve for C and D in terms of A and B. Right, so C equals, um, uh, two minus A, D equals four minus B. Okay, and so what we've proven is that if you have A plus B, uh, sorry, A B, the vector A B. And you add that to two minus A, four mi- four minus B, you're gonna get the zero vector out of it. And, yeah.
That's it? We just, we just solve for its, is expression?
Exactly, so it passes step five, there is an additive inverse, the additive inverse is two minus A, four minus B.
Okay.
Okay, okay, good, so, um. Um. Uh, number six. Is, uh, let's see what number six is, so now we're getting into scalar multiplication, so we're done with addition, we're not actually done with addition, never mind. But we're done with the main part of axioms of addition, so we figured out that. Okay, now, closed under scalar multiplication. We need to prove that R dotted with A B. R dotted with A B is still in V. Remember, the only criteria for being in V is that you're in R two. So, is R dotted with A B still in V? Well, what, what is R dotted with A B? R dotted with A B is, is this expression here. And that's still in R two, so we pass that test. Just copy and paste it down. Right, this is in R two. So, therefore, six passes. Okay.
Uh, question? Uh, V being in R two, that's, what's, what's this that we're actually following from the beginning, like, from?
This, this is the question here, this is the question, that's what they give you in the question.
They're saying V is in R two, and so you're just gonna solve for all these rules?
Yeah, to prove that it's a vector space, to prove that it's a vector.
Okay.
We know R two is a vector space if you just do normal addition and normal multiplication, we already know that. But is R two a vector space if you do this kind of addition and this kind of multiplication? Right? That's the, that's really what we're trying to figure out here.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Okay, so we passed, um, we passed number six, closed under scalar multiplication, let's look, look at number seven. Number seven is A V plus W equals A V plus A W. So I'll write it like this, I'll write it as R.
Can I ask a quick question about the one before this?
Yes. Yes, the sixth, number six here.
Yeah, for a question, for the parts where we're just like proving that it's in the, like, R two, is that the only line that we need to write?
Yeah, yeah, it's in R two, that's all, that's, that, you just have to prove that it ma- meets all the criteria of being in V. Right? But again, the only criteria of being in V is that it's in R two. And so, so then, so that's it, that's all you gotta do.
Yeah, random question, what does the R circle dot mean, like, what does that mean again?
It's different than normal multiplication, it's, it's how we, circle dot is specifically how we defined scalar multiplication. So that means this, if I just wrote R dot A B, then it's pretty easy to just think that that means R A, R B.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But that's not what we're doing, we're doing circle dot, which is this specific thing here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, uh, what was this again? Oh, yeah, yeah, prove this. When we, ah, is that me flying? Wow, okay. Um, so I'll just take this, I'll just move to the side a little bit. Then, uh, here we have, um. Um, I wa- I need to prove that this is equal to R, sorry, R dotted with A B. Plus, R dotted with, uh, C D. Right, number seven, number seven of ten, so we're, we're almost there. So, um, uh, dotted with here, just to be clear. So, R dotted with A plus C minus one, B plus D minus two. Equals, now I have to remember my definition for scalar multiplication, so R dot A B, right here is. R A minus R plus one. And then R B minus two, plus two. R B minus two R, sorry, I said it wrong, R B minus two R, plus two. Okay, and we need to add that to. Um, R C minus R plus one, R D minus two R plus two. Okay, so, uh, I will, uh, multiply this in here now too, so it's gonna be. R times A plus, A plus C minus one, minus R, plus one. Okay, and then we're gonna have R times B plus D minus two, minus two R plus two. Equals, R A minus R plus one. Plus, R C minus R plus one, uh, minus one. R B minus two R plus two. Plus, R D minus two R, plus two, plus two. I think, no, not plus two, minus two. Let's just look back, let's just look back quickly at our definition for addition, minus two at the end, yeah. Okay, we just gotta prove left side equals right side, so, um, yeah, I can just say R A plus R C minus R. Minus R plus one, R B plus R D minus two R. Minus two R plus two. Equals, R A minus two, two R. Oh, yeah, uh, minus two R, I got the two Rs from there, plus R C, plus two minus one. R B minus two R, oh, actually, R B. You know what, I'll, I'll write it so it'll clear, so that I'm not skipping, doing algebra in my head. R A minus R plus one, plus R C minus R plus one, minus one. R B minus two R plus two, plus R D minus two R plus two, minus two. Okay, and nothing really else to do, I guess there is a little bit of more to do. R A plus R C minus two R, plus one. R B plus R D minus four R plus two. Equals. R A plus R C minus two R plus one. Um, R, R B plus R D minus four R plus two. That is correct. Therefore, number seven. Passes. Okay. So that was number seven, so I proved this, um. Technically, I have to prove it backwards too, did he do it backwards? He kinda did it in a different order than me, actually, but, um.
Now that is the distributive.
Yeah, distributed, right, so notice there's two distributives, there's distributed from the left and distributed from the right, I guess I do have to prove distributed from the right is, is a separate thing too. Unless this is.
But it's the same thing, right?
It is.
We still got the same things, I don't know if you still wanna.
Well, so sometimes, sometimes you won't, sometimes you won't get the same thing, right, and then it wouldn't be.
This is the distributive on one, on two. On two number, as a scalar number, that is the distributive on two vector.
Oh, that's true, that's true, oh, actually, yeah, so then I actually wrote that a little bit wrong, yeah, yeah, I see now, I see now, yeah, you're right. So this is distributing onto two vectors, a scalar onto two vectors, this is two scalars onto a vector. Right, yeah. So let's give it a try, so what I'm, sorry, let me just go back up here, so it's gonna be. R plus, R circle plus T, oh no, well, not circle plus, nor- normal plus T, um, dotted with V. So, for number eight. Is R plus T. Circle dot V. Or circle dot A B, I'll just call it A B, go right to the vector. Equals, R dotted with A B. Plus, uh, T dotted with A B. And this is circle, circle plus. Yes, that's right. Okay. So R plus T is R plus T, I can't really change that in any way, but I can do, so it's gonna be R plus T. Times A, minus R plus T, uh, let's look at our definition for dotted. So dotted is, R times the first entry, minus R, plus one. R plus the first entry, minus R, plus one. Just remember, R is R plus T. Or, or scalar, I should say, R scalar is R plus T. And then it's R scalar times B minus two times R scalar plus two. So, R scalar times B minus two times R plus T. Plus two. Equals, so, R scalar times A minus R scalar plus one. R scalar times B minus R scalar plus two. Plus. R scalar times A minus R scalar plus one, R scalar times B. Oh, sorry, this is minus, minus two times R scalar, I, uh, forgot the formula, there's a two here. Minus two times R. So minus, minus two R plus two. R scalar times B minus two times R scalar, plus two. Okay, so I will distribute, I know this distributes. I know this distributes well, so it's gonna be R A plus T A, minus R, minus T, plus one. R B plus T B minus two R minus two T, plus two. Equals, R A minus R plus one. Uh, I guess I will actually do the addition here, so, right, so, let's do our actual definition of addition. Let's, let's look at it quickly, just so we don't forget it. Uh, our definition of addition was this. So, the first plus the first minus one, the second plus the second, uh, minus two. Right? So, uh, it's gonna be, uh, the first. Plus the first. Um, minus one. The second. Plus the second. Minus two. Okay, now we just gotta prove these are the same, I think I'm done rearranging here, so I'll just leave that. And I just want this to be, R A, well, I'll just get rid of the brackets first. Uh, R B minus two R plus two, plus, um, T B minus two T plus two, minus two. You can just forget about those, right? And, yeah, if you look at the, how this will rearrange, so this, this does rearrange into R A plus T A. Minus R, minus T, plus, plus one. And, R B plus T B minus. I missed an R here? Oh, yeah, no, no, I did miss an R, minus two R. Um, minus two T, plus two. Since, since. That equals that. Um, then it passes number eight. That was number eight, right? Yeah, that was number, so it passes number eight. Okay, number nine. Oh, yeah, and if this, you know, there's like that other chat of people listening, so if someone there has a question, they can put it in the discussion chat. And hopefully I can, I will see it, but I might not see it, so if someone, if there's a question that I don't see, then just maybe someone unmute themselves in this chat. Um, okay, so, let's. Uh, let's, um, look at number nine here. Let's look at number nine here, A B V equals A B V, that's all we're trying, okay? So, and I, I call my scalars R and T, that's the only difference, so, na- uh, nine. We're just trying to show that R. T dot A B. Equals, R T. Dot, A B. Okay, uh, I guess this is a dot here. Or would it be a dot? Yeah, it would be a dot. Yes, I think. Make sure. Yes, it would be a dot, okay. So, well, first we have to do inside the bracket, right? So, R dot, so the definition of scalar multiplication, I think I have right here, here. So, the scalar times A minus the scalar plus one. So, this, uh, the, the scalar times A minus the scalar plus one. And the other one was the scalar times B minus two times the scalar, plus two. Uh, that's a. Uh, close the bracket, and then here, it's the same thing, so it's the, the scalar. Times A, minus the scalar, plus one. The scalar, times B, minus two times the scalar, plus two. Okay, and then again, the scalar. Okay, and then again, the scalar. Times A. Minus the scalar. Plus one. The scalar. Times B. Minus the scalar plus two. Equals in here, I'll do just a little rearranging, so it's gonna be uh A R T. It's nice art minus R T plus one. B R T. There's no real reason I'm moving that around. They're all scalars, so you can just do whatever you want. Um minus two R T plus two. Okay, so then this is um.
I think you forgot to multiply the second row on the left side, uh the middle the middle term by two, the negative R.
Yeah, I'd forget that. And something else looks wrong. Because how will I get rid of that? Oh, no, no, no. Oh, no, it's okay. It's okay. Yeah, yeah, we're good. So it's gonna be, this one here is gonna be A R A R T. Minus R T plus R minus R plus one. B R T minus two R T. Plus two R minus two R plus two. Equals, and I I won't write that again, because I'm not changing that. So it's gonna be A R T minus R T plus one. B R T minus two R T. Plus two. And these are equal. Right, these are equal. So criteria number nine passes.
If we do the two vector uh multiplied by this.
Yeah, two vectors added together, multiplied by a scalar. Uh he here.
Okay.
Don't worry, don't worry. Yeah, yeah, don't worry, don't worry. Okay, and finally, number ten, the last criteria. Uh is here, and that one times V should equal V. Right? So one dotted with A B. Should equal A B.
Did it the same thing on the other uh on the zero vector or need to one one?
Uh well, this is just a scalar one. This is just the scalar one. This isn't like the one vector. This is like a scalar one, right? So one dotted with that, so it's gonna be the scalar. Times A minus the scalar plus one, uh minus the scalar plus one. The scalar times B minus two times the scalar plus two. Right, should equal A B. Well, A B. Equals A B. Yes, that's correct. So, correct, so number ten passes. Therefore. V is a vector space.
We spell up a little bit.
To ten or to?
Ten, just ten. It was one, right? Okay.
Could you show the final step of nine?
Final step of nine, yeah, here.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all of nine, I think, yeah, pretty much. That's all the actual calculation of nine. Well, not not even calculation, but rearranging of nine.
Wait, for these multiplications, it's just the the scalar times like the component, then plus one or. The second line plus two, right?
Well, kind of. It's the scalar times the component minus the scalar plus one. That's the first component. The scalar times the first component minus two times the scalar plus two.
And that's for like all the multiplication that we've been doing.
In this vector space, in this specific vector space, in this example, yeah.
Yeah, well, we are depending on what they gave us.
Yeah, it all depends on how they defined it right at the start.
A a power of X.
Well, yeah, they wouldn't get. So again, it has to be linear. Remember, this has to be, we're in linear algebra, so all this stuff has to be a linear equation. Um but yeah, so they wouldn't give.
Preparing for the worst.
Yeah. Let's go down to nine at a ten, I mean.
Yeah, I just wanna look at it against this like one times the component. Yeah. Here it times the first component minus one, then plus.
Because remember, R R. Dotted with A B is defined like this. It's uh uh it's um R A minus R plus one.
In this case, R is one, okay?
Exactly, right? R is just one in this case, and so A B equals A B.
Oh, God, yeah.
So since A B equals A B, sorry, since one times A B equals A B, it passes the test. Since it passes the all ten tests, V is a vector space.
I'm guessing that we have to do only like a couple of these, right?
Yes.
If they're giving us.
Yes, Horowitz said that. He would have said you you only have to do a few, like one or two or something like that. I don't know how many, but.
Would specific ones, no? Was that what if I just did the easiest?
Well, they would they would tell they would tell you which ones. They would tell you which ones, yeah.
Yeah, and I I guess they would probably give us the hardest ones to prove on.
So let's let's look at a couple that fail, right? Let's look at a couple that that actually fail um. And some weird ones, because they are not always this nice, right? Because this was just a nice one. This was like, you had.
This was a nice one?
This was a nice one, because your vector space, the only criteria is you have to be in R two, and the addition is just like, it's just addition. Also, we're talking about vectors, right? These are vectors, and I mean, we're always talking about vectors, but these are like what we imagine as vectors, like just lines in R two. Right?
Okay.
So there's other examples. Before we go, I I can I'm gonna go to the washroom quickly, so back in just back in just a minute, okay?
Oh, guys.
I love to make you feel like you don't know anything. It's quite the talent. It's quite the talent.
I think he's just covering like the normal nec- lecture material, but we didn't understand in the first place, so.
Yeah, I know, like, like, I haven't know anymore. If you didn't have like.
I never understood why all this is all this teaching. Like, it's completely new. It's similar, but it's new.
I don't think about it.
If your algebra is new, I've never done this.
So I think of it as like an alternate uh alternate dimension, like alternate timeline where the laws of physics are different. So addition. I'm saying that we're in the matrix here and like there's like.
I think that is true, that it make. I was thinking like when you you are defining a new uh number system, like.
I want to say about this is that most of us aren't gonna ever touch this again. It's just.
That is true.
He said that like half this stuff we're never even gonna use. We're just doing it to understand, because in real industry, you're just gonna have it au- automated with like.
So somebody need to program it, so. Yeah.
It's gonna be done every single time, right?
Yeah, a lot of this is done by computer in actual practice, right? There is there is a reason, there is a reason to understand what it's doing, but yeah, you don't have to, like, in actual industry, a computer doesn't, right? A computer just does.
I mean, yeah, good to know it, I guess.
I think this is use is use is very using the C N C computer program when you are doing uh C N C.
Possibly. I'm not really, I don't really know much about that, so.
Uh because when the C N C, sometimes you can reset the 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 point of zero. And in the in that point of view, it started, you every calculation, the every command that you put is. The computer calculate where is it in the space.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So but probably when using it, you don't need to worry about that that much. You probably just like the the programmer or people who. Service the machine or something like that, right? They need to understand that kind of stuff, right? I mean, I'm probably using it too, you need it, but uh yeah, that's that's what I'm imagining, right? And yeah, lots of many, many computer applications. So, okay, let's do an example where it fails. Some test fails. And some weird ones.
We are doing it all the time when we. Every time, but it's just uh just writing it.
When we do what? When we do like.
I all this is a is a is i- is embedding in our in some culture.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, make sure you guys all have like some sort of PDF converter merger or something ready, because you're not gonna be able to do all these questions on one page. Download it now.
Yeah. And then PDF will come first, I tell. Because there, I I actually had a problem where it was too large to PDF, and so I it then submitted, so.
Like a JPEG merger to it, it's the video.
Yeah. And also, don't ever make a mistake, because if you make a mistake, it's so hard to replace the paper. It's like, it's brain dead.
Can't refresh the page or something?
May maybe just take a screenshot and then put it into OneNote, and then you can just print it. If you go top right, right? You can just print it, and then you can save it as a PDF. It go it goes quicker that way, instead of going on to PDF merger and like.
I use Office Lens, guys. Office Lens is from uh from OneNote. It's like it's taking the photo, eh, convert it right away in PDF. But you need only to have OneDrive open, so. Eh, you save everything in OneDrive, and you're it's already in PDF. You don't need to do anything. You just download it. Your your in your phone is OneDrive. No, it's uh Office Lens.
Yeah, good, good advice there, yeah, use.
Transition now to the, it's like.
Okay, let's 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 get going on this. Let's get going on this question, okay? So um. This is a vectors, well, we don't know if it's a vector space. We're trying to prove it's a vector space. The criteria for being in the vector space is that, sorry, again, we don't know if it's a vector space. The criteria for being in the set. Is that you have to be a polynomial of degree two with real coefficients. Uh degree two or less, I think. No, degree two, degree two with real coefficients. So you can imagine what would be there, right? So like X squared plus five X mi- minus three. That would be in V, right? So again, these are abstract vector spaces. They don't have to be, they don't have to be uh arrows. They don't have to be lists of numbers, right? They can be anything. So in this case, our vectors are polynomials with degree two, with real coefficients. Uh and you also have to define addition and multiplication always, even if they're standard, you just have to say they're standard, so they'd tell you. So we're trying to prove if this is or is not a vector space. So let's start with our first one. Our first criteria is closed under addition. Um and so uh actually, Horwitz doesn't actually do a full proof of this. He just finds a counter example. So it's not closed under addition, because you can take uh the polynomial X squared plus zero X plus zero. Right? And subtract that from or add that to. Negative negative X squared plus zero X plus zero, and you get the zero, you get zero out, right? Because the X squared and the X squares cancel out. This is not in the set. So therefore, not closed.
Oh, it has to be like, it has to get back to square, okay?
Yeah, right, the whole closed under addition means that when you do the addition, you still have to be in V.
Or it need to be a polynomial.
Is it that the leading leading one has to be X squared? So like, it could have still been like X squared plus, I don't know, something, but has to have X squared in it, okay?
Yeah, yeah, right. It has to be a polynomial of degree two with real coefficients.
But you can also say that the the zero vector cannot be. It's not inside, it's not not uh inside the the system, the vector.
Well, the thing is, yeah, you're right, zero zero is not in there, but that doesn't have, that's just a zero vector. The zero vector of the system could still exist. All that means is that we take some vector in V, add it to the zero vector, and we should get V back out. All of these things will be polynomials. All of these things will be polynomials, right? So Z could still exist, but we're not even gonna go there. We know this is not a vector space, so therefore no.
No, but if zero vector is not in there, then you can prove that it's not a vector space. And there's no ad- additive inverse. There's no zero vector, so you could never get zero.
Um but careful, when you say zero vector, are you imagining this?
Yeah, so no, you need to get zero vector out. Need to get zero out. When you do the inverse, that's the whole point of the inverse, right? If you do something plus something, you need to get zero.
Oh, sorry, yeah, well, that so that's the additive inverse. That would be Z. So this isn't actually Z, sorry, this is. No, this is Z. This example is Z. You're thinking of Z plus uh oh, sorry, V plus U equals V. So, oh, sorry, equals zero, sorry, equals zero. Um well, actually, equals Z, equals Z in that case.
Isn't X squared minus X squared zero though?
Yeah, X squared minus X squared is zero, which is not in V, so this is not a vector space.
You can just say zero is not in the the vector space, so that this is not a vector space.
But I don't know that for sure. If there's not a zero vector, there could be a zero vector still. Uh Z. If I just said what?
You just said zero does not exist. Zero X squared, zero X, zero is just zero.
Yeah, but like, if just for example, like, we we could have X squared plus whatever, X squared plus X. Plus three, okay, since it's real numbers, yeah, since it's real numbers, it looks like the zero vector would have to be zero X squared plus zero X plus zero. It looks like it has to be that. Um we haven't proved that it has to be that, but it looks like it should be that. So since it looks like it should be that, yeah. That doesn't exist in the set, so it looks like it doesn't have a a zero, right? But for example, like. If you like, ignore the fact that it should be this, we could have had, for example, like, it could have been like X squared plus three X plus one. That could have been the zero vector that gets us that gets us, um sorry, that gets us X squared plus X plus three out. Right? If it was a kind of a different set, like slightly different, there would be some other criteria or something like that. So you have you like. This doesn't have to be the zero vector, just like before in our last example, zero zero wasn't the zero vector, one two was the zero vector. Right? That was not zero vector. One two is zero vector. So all I'm saying is that I it I you don't know, just because, just because this. You don't know immediately for sure that the zero vector has to be this, but looking at it now. Like, yeah, that looks like it. That's what it has to be. There's no other, no other way that would work.
Like like more generally speaking, like, all of the, if all of the conditions are true, you have a vector space, even if if even one of them is false, you don't have a vector space. So considering that that one, the first one failed, we don't have to do any more uh math to figure out.
No, you don't have to do any more.
Have to go order. You can do anyone that you want. Like, if association doesn't work, then you can just prove association.
Choose the easiest one, and then if you can prove that it's incorrect, there you go, you don't have a vector space.
Yeah.
The thing is, I wouldn't be surprised if they gave us the hardest one to prove with a very hard vector or something like that, so.
No, no, they would tell us, yeah.
Oh, my God.
In the in the like. Condition, because it's the polynomial with degree two with real nu- coefficients, right? But zero is a real uh a real number.
But it's not, it's it's not a degree two, though.
It's not a polynomial.
It's not a polynomial with degree two. It would have to be like X, you'd have to have an X squared term in there, and it would have to be a real number, like, zero is a real number, but. It would have to be, like, you'd have to have some kind of, technically here, you have zero X squared. Plus zero X plus zero, but that's just zero, which is not a polynomial, which is not a polynomial.
Alright.
You could also use the property of multiplication, because. If you multiply one by X squared or whatever it might be, it'll end up to be the same thing, but if you multiply zero by it, it'll just end up being zero, which also disproves.
I guess so, yeah, yeah, and then it would be zero, then, oh, my phone's ringing, sorry.
No problem.
I can't hear when my phone starts ringing. My phone's even already disconnected. My some somebody started playing? Yeah, okay. Let me hold on, I have to text someone back quickly.
Sorry, guys, what what just happened?
One second.
What was the last thing you guys were just discussing?
So we were discussing the fact that like he gets zero out of this first example where he put one. Um but like, that's a zero vector, because it's like zero X squared.
That's allowed, like, if that's okay, even if it's just like zero coefficients, as long as it's like X.
No, but it's a real coefficient. It's just like, at the end, it's gonna equal zero anyway. So that this proves that this will end up being part of V, because V has to end up with an X squared and.
Yeah, but so if but if our initial answer was zero, then it's not a part of the.
Yeah.
Space. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm good to go now. Okay, I'm good to go now.
Geez, alright, cool. Thanks.
Apple, the one where it's X squared minus X squared, isn't that the additive inverse thing? For V plus negative V equals zero? So doesn't that prove that it's in a vector space?
Um, well, I, I guess it, it proves that it has an additive inverse, sure, but sure, so that criteria would pass, like, that criteria would pass, but this criteria fails. So it's not, it's not a uh, it's not a, um, what's it called? Uh, vector space.
Actually, I didn't see, but that's cool.
Is this the closed under addition? But negative X squared plus zero X plus zero, that's, is that V plus W?
That's, that's just, yeah, well, this, this, you can just call this a, a, a vector U, a vector V. Right? And the result, vector W, is, is not an element of V. Isn't, this is not in V.
Aren't they both U, since they're literally like the same um, equation or same polynomial?
Well, they're not quite the same. This one has a negative one in the front, right? This one has, it's, they're different vectors. They're different things. Right?
You just have to find two vectors from the space that actually are the space, and then prove that they're added to the, if you add them, it's not in the space.
So this is, you're just proving it by a counter example here, right? If you, for, like, if you can't find a counter example, then it's, you just prove it by uh, like analytically, like doing like the actual thing, like doing the actual like uh, with random coefficients. Maybe I can try that and see if that works. I don't know how I would really, but I guess I'll try.
Maybe something that helps understand it is that if, if you remember back to like our subspace test, where we checked if it was closed under addition, we're doing the same thing here.
Mm-hmm. How, how about I, how about I check? Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
That was, that's it. Like, if you, if you can remember back to our subspace test, where we tested whether the subspace itself was um, closed under addition. Um, it's the same thing here. And like, uh, I guess you could say that subspaces are like a subset of vector spaces, because they don't like, they have similar properties, but not all the same. Right? And then if you go a little bit like more generally, you get to a vector space, so it ha- it still has the same properties as a subspace would, but eh, it's more general.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's right, yeah. So. Um. Yeah, so, uh, here, the criteria on this, so this is, this is trying to show that if we add these two together, the result, um, I don't know what to call it. I guess I'll just call it, should I? Well, here, I'll just go to the next line. I'll just say A plus D. So the criteria here is, is A cannot equal zero, D cannot equal zero, cannot equal zero. Yeah, A cannot equal zero, D cannot equal zero, right? Then we have A plus DX squared plus B plus EX plus C plus F equals, well, it doesn't really equal, the equals should be on the next line here. Right? So, yeah. But now we have a new criteria. A plus D cannot equal zero. A plus D cannot equal zero. So if you can think of an example where you have A, an A and D, where they equal zero, such as one and negative one, that equals zero. Right? So then, then uh, the sign of the vector space, right? So every vector that that meets this, where A plus D is not equal to zero, is in the vector space, is in the space. But the moment you find one, where A plus D is zero, then uh, it's not in the vector space anymore. Right? It's, it's not a, it, it just isn't a vector space anymore. Cause it fails the test. Right?
Okay, that makes sense.
Right? So yeah, so we have, so by doing this, you're creating a new criteria, right? We, originally, we just had the two criteria, A cannot equal zero, D cannot equal zero. Cause then it wouldn't be a polynomial of degree two. Right? But now we have a new one. A plus D cannot equal zero. And what that does is it creates limitations on what can be there.
Wait, I'm a bit confused. Isn't, didn't earlier, when we tried to prove the zero vector, where it could actually be zero X squared, but now you're saying that A can't be zero for this proof?
Yeah, A, A can't be zero. These numbers can't be zero. And, but then, when we added, we get a vector that has an A value of zero. So therefore, since, since A equals zero here, therefore not, therefore it fails.
Wait, what? These, the ones that are highlighted in green, those can't be zero, but the final answer could be?
Well, yeah, because we're just, we're just test, just like, like, like if I say, I have a, a vector space, if I have a vec- well, I just write it in words. I have a vector space in R two, and the, like, the second coefficient has to be a negative number, like the, sorry, the second value has to be a negative number, right? So AB, um, they have two vectors, AB and CD, right? The second one has to be negative. Okay? Oh, maybe I can't think of examples, not a vector space. CD, how would I make it that? Negative one. Well, that's still be negative. Um, C. Oh, none of these, neither of these things are, sorry, I'm bad at coming up with examples. Let me think for a second. A plus. Both of them have to be negative. If this one is negative one. Yeah. So let's say I'm allowed to do, wait, let me think for a second. No, that wouldn't be negative anymore. Hold on, one second. See. I'm trying to.
It's actually right, but not for the same, for the same property, because there will be no zero vector. Cause if for being a zero vector, the second, uh, the second term need to be positive, which is a, which is not.
In the set, yeah.
Um, you can disprove a scalar multiplication. You can multiply it by uh, zero or a po- or a negative number.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's true, but that, that doesn't help this point here. That doesn't help. I guess it kind of does. So, so, yeah, it doesn't really help this point, though. That's the thing, I'll explain that.
Uh, try scrolling up and see if I can make sense of this. So, here's the thing. On the left side, you have elements that are in the vector space. Okay? So what we mean by closed under addition is that no matter, no matter what you do, you, if you have two vectors, sorry, two things that are in the, in the vector space, and you add them up with whatever our um, addition and multiple, or our addition is defined to be, here it's standard, so we're just doing normal addition. If we do addition, and we get something, we always, not just in this particular case, we always get something that is also degree two and has a real coefficient, that means it's closed under addition. But we just found a counter example that that's not the case. Like, that just ends up being zero. Right? With these specific numbers. So that means it's not a vector space, because it's not closed under addition. Because not all combinations uh, of vectors in that su- in that space uh, result in um, another thing that's also in the space. If that makes sense. I don't know, I probably made it more confusing.
No, no, that makes, that makes sense.
Well, I think that actually helped, but isn't zero a real number?
But it's not a degree of two anymore. It's not, this isn't, this, this doesn't have a degree of two anymore.
But we can't just look at it as X squared. It has to still have a tangible coefficient.
Yeah, cause zero X squared is just zero, right? This is, this is just equal to zero. Right, that's not.
Thank you.
I, I, I have a question. Let's say, uh, if you have two um, polynomials, and you add them, and it becomes like uh, like X plus four or something. So that also wouldn't be in the, like, uh, it wouldn't satisfy that condition, because it has to have a degree of two. So you can literally come up with any, anything that cancels X squared, and you're like.
Exactly. And specifically, I did it a little bit of a different way here. So this is kind of a, a different method here. Is I said, well, let's just like, figure it out just with variables. So if I have some ABC, and I'm adding it to a DEX, the only criteria for this to be in the vector space is that A cannot equal zero, D cannot equal zero. When I add those together, there's a new criteria. A plus D cannot equal zero. Right?
Which one were you proving with this, though?
The first, the first point, closed under addition two. First closed under addition as well. Right? And so now there's a new criteria, A plus D cannot equal zero. So then we came up with, okay, well, what if I say A is one and D is negative one? That's still in the vector space. Those two things are still in the vector space, right? But when you add them together, they make zero, which means the results wouldn't be in the vector space. Which means it's not closed under addition.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
Right? And uh, so it fails the test.
Took us a while.
Yeah. Okay, let's look at the next one, unless there's any more questions for this one.
Um. One more thing, I, I just thought of this. Maybe this, maybe this helps people that are still stuck on understanding this. If you have a vector space, no matter what you, no matter what combination that you do to two, to, to, to two things in the vector space, it should still be in the vector. And it should be linear. So that's, since it's linear algebra, we're only working with linear equations and linear things, which is multiplication and addition. Those two things have to contain the vector space. If you get something outside the vector space, it's not closed. Right?
Yeah.
So you, you need something that is like self-containing. You can't get anything out of any linear equi- linear combination, uh, something outside of it.
Okay, thanks. Should have been group work.
Okay, let's do another example. Um. Uh, we, this is, this is actually kind of a short one. So V is in R two. Addition is defined like this. AB plus CD. Plus like that. Is equal to A plus, oh. A plus D, s- uh, yeah, uh, B plus C. Just normal addition there, right? Not normal addition like with vectors, but this, this addition is normal, like just the scalars. And then multiplication is defined like this. Um, R times AB is equal to just, they should have just said standard, RA, RV. So just standard, RAR. Right? So this is not standard, this is standard. This is standard. So, uh, okay, well, so we have everything we need to start proving this is a vector space. So let's start with um, number one. Well, number one is just, uh, number, uh, not the wrong thing. Number one is just, is the sum of two things still in R two. So we have two vectors in R two, add them together, you're still in R two. So one passes. Okay? Uh, number two is saying that A plus, or no, sorry, AB plus CD should equal uh, CD plus AB. Okay, let's see if this is true. So multiplication is defined kind of like, notice, it's kind of like that times plus that, right? So it's gonna be A plus, A plus D, um, and then it was B plus C, B plus C. Equals C plus B um, D plus A. Is that right? Yeah. And so we need to prove that always A plus D equals C plus B, B plus C equals D plus A. Is this always true? So it's just a mess right now, really. Um. I think, uh, how would you use this? So, so the answer is that it, is it fails. Because we just think, think of an example where B plus C, B plus C is not equal to that plus that. Right? So like, B plus C, let's say that's five, so three and two. Right? And that plus that is gonna be six. So let's say that's three and three. Right? So these two vectors.
Sorry, basically, the only time this would work is if all of those variables are equal to the same thing.
Well, that, that this plus this equals this plus this.
Yeah.
Right? That, that, so here's a case where it doesn't. Three and two equal five, three and three equal six. That's a counter example, right? So, so counter. Here's a counter example. Right? Therefore, fails. Number two, and therefore not a vector space. Not a vector space. Okay.
Sorry, can you go up a little bit?
Here?
Okay.
Okay, only two more pages left of Horace's notes. And then I'm, then I had to have all that read through.
Um, is it okay if you go over one again? I just wanna, like, can you write down what you did for one?
Well, essentially, I just, I looked at this definition up here. It closed under addition, right? The, the, the only criteria for being in V is that you're in R two. The only criteria, right? So we look here. We're gonna take a vector in, in V, AB, a vector in V, CD. When you add them together, you get A plus D, C plus, uh, A plus D, B plus C. Right? Which is in R two, right? That's an element of R two. So it passes.
Alright, thank you.
Nope. Um, okay, so this example is kind of long. So let's take a look. So example. V is equal to the set AB ER two, such that B is positive. And A and B are real. It's not, not that interesting, actually, that, that part. A and B are real. Right? A plus B, oh, that's why I wrote like that. AV plus CD. Don't know what I'm thinking. Plus CD is equal to uh. Eh, oh, just, oh, not normal, actually. A plus C, B times D. Okay, A plus C, B times D. Uh, yeah. And multiplication, so R dotted with AB is equal to R times A, R plus B. Okay, so that's our definition for these things. So let's start. Um, if I have, um, addition needs to be closed, right? So if I have um, A, B, um, A and B are real numbers, so that's the only criteria there. Um, and then uh, uh, C and D, I'm adding this together now. When I add it together, it's gonna be based on our definition, it's gonna be A plus C, BD. And we have to ask, is this an element of V, right? Well, what does it mean to be an element of V? Well, it has to be, the only real interesting thing is that, okay, it has to be in R two, it's in R two. Um, it has to be, sticky notes falling off, so I'll just leave it there. Hopefully I don't start messing up with the square in the corner. Um. And also, the second value, so not just B, but the second value has to be positive. Well, we already know that B and D are positive numbers, because that's what it means to be in, in the set, right? We already know these are positive numbers. So if you multiply a positive number with a positive number, that's still a positive number. So we are in V. Therefore, uh, therefore, uh, number one passes. Okay? Okay, number two is um, I should just have that open with a textbook here on the side. Actually, has someone said anything in the chat that I should look at? Um, okay, I don't think so. Um, so I should have the textbook open with the rules. Where is it? First course? There it is. Okay, so the second criteria is uh, it's uh, commutative, right? So it's, it's V, well, again, I call it A, B. Right? Plus CD. That's a special plus. Should equal CD plus AB. Okay, let's look at our definition for a, uh, addition. Well, we said addition was A plus C, so you add the two tops and you multiply the bottoms. So A plus C, BD equals C plus A, DB. Well, pretty clear, these are the same thing. So therefore, two passes. Make sense?
Yeah.
Good, okay. So uh, number three is that um, A, B plus CD plus EF should equal AB plus CD plus EF. Okay. So, um, again, the definition is you just add the tops, multiply the bottoms. Okay, plus EF equals AB plus, add the tops multiply the bottoms. Okay, and again, add the tops multiply the bottoms. Equals A plus C plus E, BDF. Yep, they're the same. So, number three passes. Okay. Number four is um, the existence of the additive identity. So in other words, AC, alright, AB plus, well, let's see what happens if I add zero, zero. Plus, well, let's see what happens if I add zero zero. Right? So if I add zero zero, um I should get just A B out. Right? So this is gonna be A plus zero, B times zero. Equals A B, right? I get A zero. Equals A B, okay, so zero zero is not the additive identity, zero zero is not the zero vector. Right? So let's try to figure out what the zero vector actually is. So you don't have to do that check, you can just jump right to figure out what the zero vector actually is, but just thought that would be good to check. So A B plus C D. I was like, this is a special plus, special plus, equals A B, we're trying to look for what that C and D have to be. So add the tops, A plus C equals B D. Equals A B. So what we know is that A plus C has to equal A, and B D has to equal B. So we can just cancel out A from both sides here, okay, we know C equals zero. And we know here, if we just divide both sides by B, right, we know that D has to equal one.
Yo, so is it just for this one, that we just, we check the actual zeros first, and then we try to solve for the actual zero vector?
You don't have to do this.
Just like, check if it's like easy to do, and we don't have to actually go and solve something.
Yeah. Right?
Rule like this. Like what's it like?
Are you asking if like we have, we have to maybe check, we we don't have to check if the zero vector is actually the zero vector? Right? We don't, we don't have to check. We do, we do have to check, like, if there's, if the actual zero vector, like the thing that acts as the zero vector, if it exists. And yes, it doesn't in this case, right? So the zero vector is zero one. That's the zero vector, so add any vector to that, and you'll get the same vector out.
Yeah.
So it passes number four. Number five is the existence of the additive inverse, so in other words, A B. Plus C D. We should be able to get the zero vector out, zero one. Right? Uh special plus, so let's see, A plus C, okay, and B uh B D. Equals zero one. Well, I can think of counter examples. Where this isn't true, right? Again, sorry, the only criteria is that B and D have to be positive, right? That's the only criteria on that. I can think of some counter examples where this isn't true. It's C equals. Hold on, what did he do? Oh, wait, actually, hold on, this isn't quite it, A. Never mind, sorry, I jumped, jumped the gun a little bit there, okay, A C equals zero, B D equals one. So again, okay, we can solve for C, C equals zero, uh no, C equals negative A. So that actually works, we can solve for that, B D has to, B and D both have to be positive, right? That's the only criteria here, well, if I want to try to solve for D, D would equal one over B. There are places where this doesn't work. So, forget what I said about counter examples, this, there are places where this doesn't work. Okay? Right? So there are values for A B where the additive identity doesn't exist, right? Specifically where where B equals zero. Right? So in this vector space, the vector two zero doesn't have an additive inverse. I think I said additive identity before, additive inverse. Right? Because you'd be divided by zero.
But there isn't in the in the. Whereas like eh B has to be greater than zero, that wouldn't be the case, because we wouldn't have to do zero. Cause it has, cause B has to be bigger than one.
That's true.
Then that still works.
Oh, yeah, you're right, hold on, and check that, so A B has to be. B has to be greater than zero, yeah, it can't be equal to zero, you're right, so actually it does pass.
If it was, B is greater than or equal to zero, then obviously, then that makes more sense.
Yeah, okay, sorry, yeah, then I uh, yeah, yeah, then I didn't see which one was the one that failed, okay, yeah.
Wait, are you solving for number five, right?
What'd you say, sorry?
Are you solving for the additive inverse?
Additive inverse, yes.
Yeah, so would you actually be doing the minus A and minus B? But you can't actually have minus B, or that's what, that's what you're saying, right?
Well, y- you you mean like you wanna do A B plus negative A, negative B?
Yeah.
But careful, you're 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 imagining that plus, you're imagining that plus is defined as. A plus B, A minus B, I'm sorry, A plus B, A plus B, sorry, wow, I can't, I can't write today, sorry. A B plus C plus D, like that. That's what you're imagining additions like, but that's not how we, that's not how we addition, um wow, that's not how we defined addition.
Still, still. This one's done, it's been confusing.
Am I in the wrong spot? I think I'm in the wrong spot, yeah, here, that's not how we defined addition, here. Addition was defined with a multiplication at the bottom there. Right? So when you add two numbers, add two vectors, you add the first components, and you multiply the second components.
They just give it to you, like in every example that you do this for, they'll give you, they'll like define what addition is, and they'll define what multiplication is, and then we have to use that rule. For each uh of the rules, or what do you call them, yeah, rules.
Okay, so, so can you go over that one then? So wouldn't it be A plus whatever you found, which is the?
So we're trying to figure out if C and D always exist, the vector C D, if that always exists, right? Cause if that always exists, then it passes the test, that there is an additive inverse for everything, right? So.
Yeah.
We want it to equal the zero vector, the zero vector in this case is one zero, right? So, um let's do our definition for addition, the definition for addition is A plus C, right, B times D.
Yeah.
That should equal the zero vector. So from that, we understand that A plus C should equal zero, B D should equal one. So we can figure out what C is, C is always gonna be negative A, and D is always gonna be one over B. And then we have, we have to then ask, does this always exist? Well, this always exists, can always take a negative of a number. Um you can't always take one over a number, so what's the criteria on that? B cannot equal zero. Right? But the thing is, that is already part of our definition, B has to be bigger than zero.
So it does work?
It does work, it works.
Okay.
It works.
Cool.
So it passes number five. Okay, let's look at number six, so number six is scalar multiplication, we said, so is it closed under scalar multiplication? So uh what that means is that R dotted with A B. Should still be a vector in, a vector in V, should still be, should still be an element of V. Right? So we're asking, is that an element of V? Well, um let's figure out, let's do our, let's do our actual thing, right? Let's do actual, so the the actual scalar multiplication um is defined here as R times A, R plus B. R times A, R plus B. Right? Still asking, is this an element of V? Well, the criteria is that R plus B has to be greater than zero. Right? But the thing is, R can be any number. So, right, I can think of a pair that doesn't work, like whatever, uh negative five and one. Right? That is not, not greater than zero. Right? So, so I found a counter example, therefore it fails.
I saw it. But you can just keep everything and do the multiplication and 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 see that that was.
Yeah, I can keep, what'd you say, sorry, I can keep everything?
I I saw, I saw, I saw, I saw this bef- uh like, I saw it before, so. You just prove this already without proving the other thing, and if it's not working on this, you don't need to do anything.
I don't have to check the rest of them, no, I don't have to check anything else, right? Yeah, no, no, I don't.
Also, the one is not working.
The one?
The one scalar is not the same, is not, it's not working.
Well, one would work if I multiplied it by one, cause then it would just be one plus some positive number, and that's still there.
Yeah, but it will be on the same vector.
It would still be in V, though, that's all we care about, is it in V?
No, because one scale, one scalar, uh one. The one scalar uh times uh the multiplication on the ones, with the one scalar supposed to be the same vector, no?
It's not supposed, so in six, we're just checking if it's closed under scalar multiplication. We're just, we're just.
In ten, also, no, if I remember.
What, what'd you say, sorry?
In ten, in the ten, in the in the uh in the ten uh problem eh um. In the prob- the, you need to prove all ten, no?
Yeah, that that, that is always part of V, that is always part of V. Right? That this vector here, this vector, which is, which is R times A B, I have to prove that this is always in V. Always an element of V, and I can prove that it's not always, because I can think of a counter example, right? Because we have to remember the the, what it means to be in V, what it means to be in V is that your s- uh. Your second component has to be positive, your second component has to be positive, so I can think of.
I think.
A combination where that's not positive.
I think what he's saying is like, you know how there's like ten conditions? The tenth one is like, if you multiply it with one, it has to be equal to the vector.
Oh, okay, so that's the tenth one.
Yeah, and that doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Use that as a counter example too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go, okay, sorry, I didn't understand, yeah, so one, one time, so we're gonna skip to ten quickly, ten will also fail. Because one times V, it should, that should equal V, but how we defined it, uh so, so, sorry, instead of V, I'll just call it A B. Right? So A B, A B, right? So how we defined multiplication is that it's gonna be one plus A over B times one. Or, wrote kind of backwards, A plus, A plus one, but this is not equal to A B, right? This is equal to A, put vectors around it, this is equal to A plus one. B. Which is not equal to A B, so it also fails number ten.
Did we move the other way around, B plus one, and then one times B?
It's the way around.
Is it?
Yeah, B plus one, A times.
Art, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right, it is the other way around, sorry. Yeah, but it's the same idea, so it's, it's. A one. A, B plus one, B plus one.
I choose this because it's the easiest one to do.
Yeah, yeah, that works, that works too, right?
And when we're given a question, do we have to do it in order, or can we just do whichever one we know that is going to give us?
Fail, uh you could, no, you can do it in any order, I'm pretty sure, unless it, unless it says do all of them in order, but yeah, I think if.
It would suck if you did all of them, and the tenth one is the one.
Well, tenth one's pretty easy to check, so you might wanna check that first.
Yeah, if you have like a hunch, you have a hunch that like it's not.
I was saying that it's like, if we, do we have to do it in order, like, do they wanna like do it from one, two, three, four, like?
They are weak, if they are wicked enough, then we ask you some of them.
That he knows.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't, we, they shouldn't ask.
Professors themselves, the professors themselves won't care, it's the stupid TAs that mark our shit half the time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, are the TAs gonna eh care about?
It's different for every TA, it's so annoying, like, sometimes you get the right answer at the end, but cause you didn't follow their procedure, whatever, you get marks off.
Cause they're not using their brain while marking, they're just following the rubric. You you think they're gonna mark like four fourteen hundred tests and also YouTube?
Also pay attention, yeah.
But it's not one TA, it's like many.
Yeah, exactly, so they they're not trying to like pay attention, like actually do the math, and actually follow your math, it's just like, if you follow this, good, if not, you're getting marked.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, they 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 got a lot to do, so they're not gonna.
Also, TAs are still students, so.
Yeah, they're students and they're teaching, and they're doing the labs and tutorials and the other stuff.
So why don't you just read a real one, and just like stop me, it's difficult.
But they're getting paid fifty dollars an hour or something, yeah.
Oh, they get paid for that?
Yeah.
It's a job, yeah.
Oh my god. Mark easy there, what?
What's the rule on the multiplication for this one? A plus one times B D?
Um, uh yeah, here, I'll go up to the top on this one.
Okay, so it's A plus C times B D, yeah, I make that noise, it's, yeah, oops, yeah, okay. Gosh, I feel like my mind's just gonna fail on me, it's just gonna be like, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Are you like?
Take a break in between, or you're gonna short circuit during the test?
Yeah.
Yeah. But like, I hope it's not like, unless we're my first question to me, like forty minutes, man, then I start to freak out.
It's like, oh shit, true.
It's not like hard, you just take one, and then I just freak out for the next.
This, then your test is just long as hell, like each question is so long.
You know what? Good vibes, good vibes, let's continue.
So I was thinking we'll do the practice test now, is that good with everybody?
Wait, did we take a, did we take a break or no?
We didn't take a break, but it's just.
Okay.
The fifth, the fifth, here's the fifth.
We don't time.
Identity.
Uh, did I do additive identity? Let's see which one's here. Additive identity would be the fourth one, two, three, four, first one, yeah, here. Uh yeah, here, additive identity.
That's just where you got the zero.
What?
Which is zero one, which is zero one, yeah.
What's about it?
Okay. I was just unsure if you got the thing for the step five.
Yeah, so that's how I got the zero vector at the end there, yeah.
Oh, you mean you're for four, you used to, for five, the answer for four is for five, to solve five?
Yeah, the additive identity, the zero vector, this is the zero vector in our subs, in our uh vector space, so I have to figure out if there's an additive identity that gets me the. Or additive inverse, that gets me the zero vector.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I'll get the practice test up. Oh, doesn't know my password. Okay, and your algebra.
That definitely not. Sure, sure that I said anything that would work.
Okay, um. There. Okay, so first question is this. Did it go? Yes, okay, first question is this, so multiple choice. So let T go from R N to R N be an isomorphism, which of the following is always true? Um well, so determinant of T is zero, that is not true, if the determinant is zero, then you're going from. Uh you're going down a dimension, or some some amount of dimensions, if your determinant is zero, so it wouldn't be from R N to R N anymore. Uh T is invertible, yeah, T would be invertible, an isomorph, an isomorphism is always invertible. Um the rows of T are linearly independent. Um. But that would also be true, I think.
I honestly didn't get what I unmended.
The, oh, the rows of T, sorry, the rows of T, I was thinking the columns, well, it's just like, if you have an isomorphism. That's, you know, defined like this, it just means that the row space is always in linearly independent, that doesn't have to be true. I don't really know much about the row space, I know the column space would have to be linearly independent, but the row space, I don't, I don't think so, so. This I know has to be always true, though. Uh T does not have to be the identity matrix, because that would, that would just do nothing, and none of these is not true, because I said that one, so B is the answer. This one is like more of like a, I don't think so, I don't see any reason to, but, so I'll just put like a question mark, but I would choose this one, and that's the right answer on the. Okay, number two is um. Number two is. Find the eigenspace of the matrix for this eigenvalue. Uh so we, since we know it has an eigenvalue of that, we can just take the matrix, negative four, and just subtract off that lambda. So minus two, fifteen, minus two, seven, minus two. Right? Subtract off that lambda from all the diagonals, and then. Uh let's see where that goes, so negative six, fifteen, negative two, five, right? I'll multiply them both by negative one. And divide uh this one by by three, so it's gonna be uh two and five. Right? And then we see they're the same, so. Right, and then we see they're the same, so this row is gonna go away. And this one's gonna be one, uh, negative five halves. Right, and then, so the null space of this, like, it's in R R A F now, all that was just putting in R A F. And so now the null space is gonna be X, uh, so Y equals T, X equals five halves T. So the null space is five over two, one. Which is, um, uh, pretty much this one, so you're allowed to multiply it by two. So I'm gonna multiply that by two, so it's gonna be five, five, two. So I would say B, and B is the answer.
Uh, would you get the wrong answer if you don't like multiply it, like, by the end?
Uh, no, it'd be the same thing, because remember you're talking about the span, so the, the span of this vector is the same as the span of this vector. They're just, they're just scaled, they're just scaled by some amount, right? So, it technically, this is just as, this is, uh, without the two there, this is just as correct as this. Uh, it's just that since it's one of the answers, you gotta, you would. Okay, uh, next one is this. So number three. Uh, let U one, U two, U three be a basis for the vector space V, which of the following is also a basis for the vector space V? So I know, um, the, in the study hall you did this, right, so, um, well, first of all, it's a basis, so this is linearly independent. Which means that since there's three vectors, these must all be, this must be in R three. So there's no way that this is a basis for the same vector space, cuz it has two components. This one has four components, so it's also, there's no way that's a basis. Right, but then these bottom two, there's a possibility that one of these could be a basis. So they're both in R three, right, well, they're both, they both have three components, so if they're in, if they're independent, then there's a span of that, right? So we have to prove that these are linearly independent, that's what we're pretty have to, pretty much have to prove, is that these are linearly independent. We know these themselves are linearly independent. So we have to pretty much figure out, is there some sort of combination of U one minus U two? Uh, that makes, you, you, uh, sorry, combination of like these two that make that, or combination of some other pair that make the other thing. Right, so, um, let's do it with D first, so, could I just say A times U one minus U two? Yeah, I think I can just say that, let's see. A times U one minus U two, plus B times U two minus U three. Would that work? Not really. Well, let's see, plus C times U three minus U one equals zero. So the only solutions to this should be zero, 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 if it's independent, so I'm doing D right now. So, um, too many variables. I think I can say A, A U one minus A U two, plus, uh, B U two minus, you, uh, B U three. No, no, I can't do that.
You wanna factor out the U one, U two, U three and make an idea?
Yeah, yeah. C, C U three minus C U one equals zero. Then, yeah, I'm gonna match up the U ones, A U one, um, minus C U one.
I have a question. Why can't you just like, cuz the last vector is the, um, I feel like it's the sum of the first two components. Can you just prove that and then it'll be?
Let's see, yeah, yeah, U one minus U two, plus U two minus U three. So that cancels, it's U one minus U three, so not quite, but we're very close, so I think I can just do, negative one times that. So I can just say it's, can't I just say it's negative one times U one minus U two, minus one times U two minus U three? So negative U one plus U two minus U two plus U three, yeah. U three minus U one, which is the last, yeah, that's right, so, negative one times this, negative one times this, add it together, gets you this, therefore this is linearly dependent. Right?
Wait, wouldn't it mean that U three minus U one is linearly dependent? You are just pointing on the entire.
The whole thing, the whole, the whole set is dependent, yeah, the whole set is.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we know it's not D.
You need to check also C?
Yeah, we have to check C now, we don't know for sure if C is, it could be either, C could be, if, if this is independent, then that's the answer, if this is, if it's, if it's dependent, then none of these is the answer. So, um, I guess I'll just check in the same way, so we got U, A times U one, uh, minus U two, plus B times U three minus U two, plus C times U one plus U three, equals zero. Okay, so, I'm gonna multiply that in, A U one, minus A U two, plus B U three minus B U two, plus C U one, plus C U three equals zero. Put all the A, A U ones together, A U one plus C U one, minus A U two, plus C U two, plus B U three, plus C U three. Yeah, equals zero, factor out the U one, so.
It should be A U two minus B U two.
Oh. Yeah, I don't know where I got that from, minus, minus B U two. Okay, thank you. U one, A plus C, plus U two, negative A minus B, plus U three, B plus C, equals zero. So the only solutions, for this, so I think I can now take, I can say now I wanna solve for, wait, we know U is not zero.
Uh, put A, A plus C equals zero, negative A minus B equals zero, B plus C equals zero, put them into a thing, we'll reduce.
That's what I was thinking, but, that, that's what I was thinking too, um, why exactly? Because we know that U's are not zero.
Yeah, and then the only way to make them zero is that if all of them are all.
Oh, okay, yeah, if those are all zero, and the only solutions to that should be that A equals zero, B equals zero, C equals zero.
Yep. Mm-hmm, so you get infinite solutions or at least, at least one solution, you should be good here.
So, um, uh, one, zero, one, negative one, negative one, zero, zero, one, one. So in R R A F, so I'll just, uh, row two plus row one is one, oh, one, zero, negative one, uh, one, zero, one, one. Uh, then, row two plus row three is one, oh, one, oh, uh, zero, zero, two, zero, one, one. Uh, yeah, that's what I want, I'll turn that into a one. Okay, and then I'll, uh, I'll just do row, well, I can just, I can pretty much just turn these into zeros. Right, so then, yes. One solution, A equals B equals C equals zero, ah, equals zero. Therefore, uh, this is line, uh, therefore this is linearly independent. Right, therefore this is linearly independent, so that's the answer, see. Okay, any questions about that one? Okay, I think I'm gonna just take a, like a, maybe a five minute break, and I'm gonna go eat something, cuz I'm, I, I think I need a little something to, help keep doing questions, so how about let's take just a five minute break, and then I'll, I'll be back soon, okay, we'll keep going on the practice, we'll finish the practice thing before two. Okay. So I'll just say back and, I'll just say back soon. Where are we? Uh, properties, back at.
I'll, we'll see you guys in the evening then.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. Okay, so I'll be back at one twenty, so I'll be back soon, okay? Just getting a snack.
Okay.
The worst part about this is that if we do well, professors will be patting themselves thinking that, oh, they were so good. Disgusting.
Let's all just do horrible so they have to curve it. But I, I don't think we have a choice of doing horrible, we're just gonna, it's just gonna happen.
I am prepared to fail.
I mean.
Then, I understand the concept, I just can't do questions, man, I do, I just haven't built the intuition enough to do the questions.
Someone said something about the only way it could be zero is if the coefficients are zero, I was like, I understand, but I wouldn't intuitively think that for myself. That's the problem.
Yep.
I haven't even looked at physics, that's, that's scary.
For some reason, linear algebra is like, I feel like once that's done, I'm a better person.
Yo, guys, we have a hundred and ninety-five questions for two hours, to, uh, for the.
I was looking at the exam bank and it's like, it's, it's so silly.
Can you send, can you send a link for that? Can you send a link for that? I wasn't able to find any.
I didn't really find that many exam banks, it was like, re-link, like.
I'm just gonna lie.
Actually, they're like three separate exams. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I like how they only said like what's on the exam like the day before it.
Yeah, I, I.
We should, we should make a.
Twenty-four hour period.
We should make a, okay, you'd say, cuz I remember the last class, which was the seventh, she said that she would get it all by the end of the day. And December fifteenth is not the end, fourteen is not the end of the day, they waited a whole.
No, actually, December fifteenth at like one AM or something like that.
Yeah, I emailed her twice, like, uh, a few weeks ago, like around like early December, and she never responded back to me, like just about what's on the exam.
I'm like, yo, can you post the iClicker so we know what type of questions we're looking at? She's like, she didn't even reply to it, I'm like, bruh.
Well, I mean, in, uh, the C N one hundred discussions page, there's, uh, if you go to the PIN masters, there's an exam back.
Oh, thank you, whoever said that.
Oh, this, you're just saying things in the respective, that'll be fine.
Anonymous sent it, isn't it, uh, anonymous is here.
Who's anonymous?
Is it the third guy, he's right there.
Oh, 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 very funny, very funny.
Nobody knows.
Yo, is the Ryson website down for anyone else?
Uh, I never use that fast.
That would be beautiful, it was.
Never have, never will. Type of team, what the hell is that? What kind of question is that?
I remember, uh, during the summer, uh, like, when you had to, like, I, you had to check, like, the RAM's page, but it would always go down at eleven PM, and I would always check after eleven PM.
Nice.
So that was fun.
You, huh, okay, so on top of the C E N lectures, you want us to memorize all the courses a chemical engineer takes? Over eight semesters.
It's so stupid, like, like, what even?
Why do we have a hundred and ninety-five questions?
Yeah, we have a hundred and ninety-five questions tomorrow.
And ye- yes.
Yeah.
No, that'd be more sense, which is what I thought they were gonna do. I thought they were gonna make it like discipline specific, like if you're in chemical, we'll ask you only questions.
Make a little bit more sense, you know?
They're probably gonna give like super simple questions, yeah, they're overthinking it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, what shape is this on that one iClicker?
I Q one, I was like, I guess somebody, yeah.
Huge more booster.
But like, we need a calculator, like, why do we need a calculator?
Wait, we need a calculator.
Yeah, it said that on the.
Yeah, yeah, don't forget the computer, you need a computer.
Oh, okay.
Imagine she pulls up some M P questions in there, bro, I threw my chem shit out.
Man's like, yo, I don't wanna deal with this no more, and get this chem shit out of here.
You threw it out, dude, you're gonna need it next semester, you.
No, like threw it out, I was in, I put it in the back cupboard like it's just, I don't, it's not on my workspace anymore.
Okay, got it.
I don't wanna go in the middle of a C E N exam and try to go through all my chem stuff to find what the hell it's asking.
Thirty-six seconds, so some, some person said that we had thirty-six questions, thirty-six seconds per question.
Yeah.
Whatever, dude, I'm not even gonna think about it, I'm just gonna do it as fast as possible and then go study physics.
It's obviously just a test. The real test is, they're actually monitoring us and like our moods and our behaviors. Where we're guinea pigs for the new era of online learning.
Yep.
I think so. Why do you think for each course, does our exam in differently? Why is it not consistent? They're trying to figure out which one's the best way for the future generation, you should be proud of yourself, guys.
No, no, no.
Cause that whole last motivational speaker, did you watch like some Neil deGrasse Tyson video performance?
I, I watched, um, Nick Wojcik, yeah, I was just like, okay, I feel better now, so I want you guys to feel better too.
It's just, that's not weak, guys, that's not weak.
You have three days back to back to back. Wait, when, when is, uh, when is your boy, um, Adam doing the thing?
The what?
Physics, the physics session. So Wednesday, ten AM, and then six PM, and Thursday, ten AM.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I just wanna go and play on the Playstation, holy shit, tomorrow.
Wait, wait, question, 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 would you ra- would you guys rather have, uh, the sessions on Zoom or have two rooms of Discord?
Why would we need two rooms of Discord?
Because there's a limit on the stream, like, I couldn't get in for a while.
Yeah, that's what I mean, if we, if we, if we, what's it called, what we did later, what we, uh, Manuel was, uh, streaming in the second. Uh.
Oh, that's why he did it, okay, good.
Everybody, I'm back, what, I, what'd you say?
We have a proposition for you. Um, we ha- we propose that we move the sessions to Zoom, because, um, there's a limit on how people, how many people can, uh, join the Discord, Discord, uh, watch your stream.
Yeah, we did that, we did that before, and I think we're gonna do that for the physics sessions this week, which start tomorrow, right, by physics sessions, I think we're gonna do that for that. It's just that before, uh, it was like we had, we reached the cap here, right, fifty, and then when it's on Zoom, less people actually see, see the call. Less people actually see the call.
Yeah, less people can.
So it's, you never get fifty then, I never get fifty in the Zoom call, right? Because people don't actually like see it in Discord, right, so they don't join.
Oh, I see what you mean, I see what you mean.
Right?
Yeah, so I think, I think what we do, we just have the two rooms, the two calls.
I think that's a better solution because more people actually attend, and it's like more people actually like get helped like that, right?
Yeah.
So I think that's, I think that's better, but I don't know, we'll, we'll see, we'll see what, we'll see what we do, right?
But can my. Talk to you.
What you're saying, in, in another call, in another, in another thing?
They can't actually talk to you directly like that.
They can quickly hop into this call, talk, and then go back to watch.
So maybe, maybe we should like leave like two spaces open in this, in this call always, as a.
Where, where do we go to watch if we can't see the thing anymore?
You would go to the second call. It's closed now, but you would go to the second call, there's a two doing sort of two, you just click on it and then, somebody will be streaming and they'll, they'll be streaming, uh, Adam, and you can just watch from there.
Yeah.
Right now, or is it like?
Well, not now, cuz we're gonna have fifty.
Or cuz I can't see the stream anymore, cuz they left the callbacks in it, and it's not letting me in back in.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
But you're in right now, aren't you, so?
No, 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 cuz I had to reset my computer, cuz I don't know why, I couldn't access the Ryson site, and the Ryson site is just down for me right now. So I tried resetting my computer and.
But how, but how can I hear you if you're not in the call, how?
No, I just rejoined, I just rejoined.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
But I can't watch the stream cuz it's max number of viewers.
Oh, I see, okay.
I think you can, you can be in V C, but you can't be in the stream, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, we'll do this for tomorrow because I don't think Manuel's doing, you can have my spot, I'm going anyway.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, man.
Yeah, yeah, I'll see you guys.
See ya, see ya. Okay, so let's continue, um, next one is a very annoying question, so, um, and a question that will take us a minute, so let's look at this. It's not a multiple choice, it's a full question, so let T go from R two to R two be a linear mapping defined by T of that equals that, and consider those two bases. a full question so let T go from R two to R two be a linear mapping defined by T of that equals that and consider those two bases find MB two B one of T with respect to the given basis okay so going back to the stuff we did yesterday this is like the stuff that I don't have a very good understanding of like what I'm doing but like I can answer the question um so if I go here just have to find the exact formulas um there so one way to look at M one way to look at doing this MB two B one is to do is to do and we're in R two so that's not that bad we're gonna do um M B two B one equals C B two of T of V uh of V one and that's the first column and the second column is C B two of T of V two where V one and V two um so if that's if that's B two V one and this is V one and that's V two so from the 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 vectors from the basis the other basis from B from B one sorry from B one from this yeah this isn't too bad to do so T of V one so we're pretty much doing C B two um T of zero one oops T of zero one and then C B two T of V uh V two is one negative one right so what's T of zero one well we look at just the definition so T of X Y is two Y X plus Y so two times the second component so C B two of two times the second component add up the two components okay
wait T was just
T is
alright it changed it changed oh yeah yeah okay
um and then T of negative one is again two times the second component add up the components okay and now we just gotta calculate these things so what's C B two so what that means is we wanna write two one as a linear combination of the vectors in B two negative one one and uh B times one one wait are these the same can I see it just by looking at it yeah three no one no one okay I can't do it just by looking at it so let's take a look so this is gonna be negative one 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 two one right yeah that's right yeah I'll mention with that yeah and then uh I'll do row one plus row two so zero two three one 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 right divide this row by two so three halves and then I'll do row two minus row one one zero one minus three halves so one so it's negative a half um well that's sorry that's for the second so zero one three halves one zero negative a half okay so A equals negative a half negative a half B equals three halves right so C B what C B two of two one I'm gonna continue down here is going to be uh negative a half three three over two three over two uh that's the first column and the second column is going to be the same thing but with this vector so negative two zero negative two zero as a linear combination of the two basis vectors in B two negative one 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 okay so then that's one one well I guess I write like that so negative one 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 um negative two zero row one plus row two zero two negative two um one one zero divide this by two good and then I'll do row two minus row one zero one negative one um one zero one minus one zero minus minus one is zero plus one which is one sorry yeah okay so I guess I could have probably seen this just by looking so A equals one B equals negative one so one negative one is that thing right there and that's the answer that equals M B two B one do I understand what I'm actually doing no um but can I just plug things in yes I can so
yeah can you scroll down for a little bit yeah you do you do um you are weird like are you yeah but that's fine
I do it weird just cuz I try to do it fast right I'm doing it yeah I'm doing it fast but so you do it however you however you want to
yeah so it's just yeah it's just like the value V V by translated with T and then is that also a translation is C B two a translation of that
uh it's a transformation it's transformation yeah yeah it it is another it's a transformation you're applying and the values that you get out of it is the A and B value with respect to that basis sorry
yes so use we equate the the one that we found to the two components of like
of B two of this of this thing right of B two which we got in the question
yeah okay
and solve for A and B
is there like R two like is there any limit to it like it could be like an R three and R or something and we have
you just have to have three vectors they would have to be three vectors in R three right
yeah but will it always be like from R two to R two like that that's the only way this will work right
um no no it could go from R two to R three it could it could go to different
ah right that's fine
yeah and then you just treat it like that right
I don't know how to treat it but okay
yeah
a quick question how did you get the the two one vector like the two one equals A I I didn't care how did you get the two one vector
oh that's uh so from here from from this this part here right so I did T of this and T of that so T of zero one is remember T is two times the second component add up the two components so two times the second component out of the two components
right okay thank you
um okay so let's go we want to be so part part B of this question is this um oh there we go use uh find this so find C it's different color C B two of T of U or I guess I'll just immediately replace one one here right uh using the result in that so how would I use the result well okay actually it's not that bad C B C B two yeah I don't know how you how do I use the result
wouldn't you just like use back this the equate that to the after you transform it wouldn't you just like use it so like you do the it's gonna be two and what's that zero or something and you just do the same thing isn't that how you do it like I wouldn't treat
yeah yeah two two and yeah yeah it would be well it would be two and two really uh transform version yeah but it says use the result so yeah you can definitely do that replace this with two two right apply the transfer apply the transformation um and then just do C sub C sub B two of that but since it says use the thing I think we have to do it a different way
works ways like no points will have lasted otherwise
yeah yeah right so using the result from here well we know what C of that is and C of that is oh no we don't know what that hold on two is
I don't get that actually
no they C sub B oh you use a different formula wow this is getting a little complicated okay so you use a different formula we're looking for C wow what C sub B one zero one negative one wow so they they do make it more complicated by saying use that um so what you have to do is we're looking for a C sub B two of that well C sub B two of T of X is equal to M B two B one of C sub B one of the same vector that's just the formula that we have from our lecture right
oh
and so what they want us to do what they want us to do
oh is use this value and then I mean this
solve for that and then multiply these two we found this in the last question that's why it's we're using the result right
okay
solve for this
so this is where
yeah I get this but where is this further from this MB two times
five point eight
five point eight okay
that's the how you're first introduced to MB two B one they like this is how this is like the definition of MB two B one it's that it does this
ah okay
right so
so you just like the two two thing but then you just times it by the MB two MB one
oh sorry sorry I this is supposed to be T no no that's not even no sorry that I thought that was supposed to be T of X no no that's just X
wait are you sure is it C B one on the left side
yeah C B one on the left side yeah
I am confused why wouldn't this turn
why would this what
why would this not become two two
where like this thing in here we come to two
yeah
well because it would if you apply the transformation you can you can right um but that's not how they're asking you're asking you to use the result from part A right
uh with this whole C B one
right
the
we found that in part A we found this thing in part A right so we need to solve for this just solve for it so we're looking for one one as a linear combination of the vectors in B one while the vectors in B one are uh zero one and one negative one plus B times one negative one right so it's gonna be zero one one negative one 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 right so I'm actually pretty much there so row two plus row one so it's gonna be um zero one 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 zero two so A equals two B it's not a B is it B equals one so um C sub B that is so I'll just continue down here M B two B one which is what we know from the other question times two one right cuz that's what C sub B one of one one is right
yeah that makes sense
right B one and that'll be our answer that'll be what we're looking for that thing over here so let's get the matrix it's gonna be uh negative a half negative a half three halves one negative one
C B one
right times two one so two times negative that three halves plus one negative one so that's gonna be negative one plus one three minus one so zero two is my answer yeah
oh yeah and it's the same thing actually there you go
we can we we can do it the multiplication way too right the where you just for uh MB two B one you multi- you multiply um the matrix representation of C B two uh and then multiply by the T transformation then multiply by C B one inverse
oh yeah yeah you can do that that was uh would have been a longer way that would be for part A right that would be that's for part A
yeah yeah
yeah that would be a little longer to do than this
okay
wait what didn't you even suggest
what'd you say say
didn't even suggest using the
oh there's a different there's a different formula yeah for MB M B two B one is equal to the matrix representation of C B two composed with T composed with C B one inverse
oh so he was like
yeah that's what I was thinking
yeah
is C B one inverse the basis vectors of C B of the of B one
it's it's like it's like what is the linear combination yeah what is the linear combination of the basis vectors
yikes yo
C B one inverse is just the basis vectors in a matrix and then C B two is the inverse of just the vectors in the basis uh vectors in the matrix
repeat that
so C B C B two right you're given to you're given two vectors that are in that are in B two you give the inverse of that and that's C B two
okay
and then for inverse of C B one you just take those two you just take those two vectors and that's your inverse of C B C B
oh you have B one and B two
that's true
oh you just take
remember I wrote that down cuz seeing it's kinda like weird
B one the matrix represents so if you just have the basis make all those vectors the columns that is equal to C B one inverse
because like the inverse undo is undo is a C right basically
you can think of it
sure
yeah
sure um so so I haven't mentioned that yet in a live thing this is like another formula that's here we just didn't use it yet but yeah that's another thing that's useful
to know so wait what did you actually apply then what what were we given we have B one and then he's trying to find
we have B one B two we have T we're trying to find MB two B one so I did it like this
oh so he was trying to find first part using that formula instead of the one you have here
first part was yeah there was only one formula we used for that right then the second part is saying use the result from part B right use the result from part B to solve for this and so I used a different formula which is this right here C sub B two of T of X equals MB two B one of C sub B one of X so a lot of ha- lot happening there right but this is what we're looking for I just have to solve the left side so I did C sub C sub B one of one one which ended up being two one and just multiply that by the matrix we got in part A
okay and he was suggesting a different way to find MB two B one
yeah which is for part A which is for part A right not for
yeah cool cool moving on then that's cool
okay
could we yeah continue or I'll ask for it um for B uh can you scroll up a little bit please uh for the formula for the a little bit more yeah uh for that formula for the um MB two B one bracket C B one uh would it be the T would it would it be the T of uh one one or would just be C B one of that
here here there's a T one here there's not a T one there's not
okay so there's not
there's no yeah I know
formula right
yeah that's a formula yeah this is like the first definition of MB two B one we get is this that's the word it first
okay cool thank you
still not get the M two this this part I still not get it like even A
yeah it's it's literally I'm just plugging I I don't actually understand what I'm doing I'm just plugging it into this formula I'm just plugging into this formula MB two B one is the matrix representation of the columns of that matrix is C B two of T of V one C B two of T of V one and V one and V two are from are from B one not not B two not B two from B one
and C B two how do you find C B two
C B two what C is saying if I say C B uh of X right and I have a basis so you have to know what the basis is B is equal to uh let's say it's equal to V one plus uh not not V one V one V two dot 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 V N okay so we have some amount of vectors here right some N amount of vectors here right then this is equal to A one A two dot 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 A N and those A's they come from X which is which is always gonna be a linear combination of V one plus plus A one plus A two times V two plus A three times V three dot 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 ti- uh plus A N times V
okay that makes way more sense oh my goodness
X is a is a depend not
it's whatever your input is
okay
X is like yeah it's it's some combination and that specific combination is what you get when you do C B of that of that
yo hold up for some reason after doing that I kinda mixed me up did you just or you said B is V one V two or whatever and then you do the X of B how does it work again
but it's C C sub B is is the name of the transformation you apply that to X and so you're pretty much asking what is the linear combination of these vectors that get me X right
ah okay
those A values so so um uh A one A one times V one that's your first coordinate A two times V two that's your second coordinate A three times V three that would be third A N times V N is your AN times VN is your nth coordinate.
Yeah, actually, it worked with the numbers. Can you scroll back? I'll just direct right here.
To here?
Yeah. Yeah, and then scroll a little bit more. And we just do the, it's equated to basically.
So you see, I just, I'm just looking at, I want this vector as a linear combination, A times B. Times the vectors in B two, which the vectors in B two were. Were negative. What'd you say, sorry?
You give me the X R in this case, the transformation of.
Yeah, I gave, I gave you the X and I also gave you the the base, the basis, right? The basis.
So you you put the V one here. Then you do the transformation of that number of the V one. And then you do, you do the combination B two on the transformation of B one.
Yes, on the transformation of V one, yeah.
Okay.
That's right, yeah. That's good. So that's uh, I I don't like any of those questions because I don't understand what I'm doing, so.
Famous goodbye, Adam.
Okay, so um. Uh, here. Uh, question five is, is the set linearly dependent or independent in P two? Justify your answer. So P two is the set which contains all polynomials of degree two or less. So um.
In the chat, they said it, this is not on, on the test.
This is not on the test?
No.
Okay, we can skip it then.
That's what people said in the chat.
Yeah, in the.
Similar to this in the video, and then they said that we should skip those as well. So.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, so print screen, I'll get this one. Oh, oh, the next one too, I guess. Yeah, the next question two.
But what topic is that though?
Well, it's it's abstract vector spaces.
Yeah, it's nine point two.
It's nine point two? Okay, so the next one will also be nine point two. So then this. Next one is consider the vector space M two, two, which is the set of all matrices, two by two matrices.
Yeah.
So uh, next one is gonna be part of it though. So number six is.
Uh, why isn't two out? Is that a part of the abstract thingy?
Yeah, this P two is part of abstract vector spaces, chapter nine, yeah. So we don't do that one. I'll just delete that. So um. Okay, let T go from R three to R three be a transformation induced by by A. Let S go from R two to R three be defined by that, where A is that. So we know both the transformations. Okay, is S one to one? So if S is one to one, uh, that means that if we get S of S of A. B being the zero vector. All right, like this, zero, zero. Then AB being zero, zero has to be the only solution. This must have been the zero vector that we put in. So let's take a look. This is gonna be A minus B, two A plus two B, negative A plus two B. Equals. Oh, I guess three zeros, zero, 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 right? Doesn't really matter. So A minus, A minus B equals zero. Two A plus two B equals zero, negative A plus two B equals zero. So here we get. A equals B. Right? Uh, so then here we get also, well, we get, no, we get A equals negative B. And here we get. A equals two B. So. Yeah, the only solution to this is A equal, yeah. So the only solution to this is zero.
Zero.
Yeah. So A equals B equals zero. Of course, I can also put this in just RREF, like you just put this in a matrix, like one, negative, one, two, two, negative, one, two. And just solve. And I would end up with one, zero, zero, one, zero, zero.
So even if there's a free variable, it's one to one.
Um, if there's a, well, there's no free variable in this.
I mean, zero, zero, the last row.
The row, yeah. So there's no free, the important thing is there's no free variable, right? It's just, it's just a row of zeros.
It's not on two, but is in uh is one to one.
Well, I think we're gonna get to, we're gonna get to on two next, I think. Yes. The next thing is, is S on two? So if S is on two, that means uh, that means if I choose any vector in the output space, A, A, B, C, right? There must be some S of X, Y that gets me that. Right? So let's take a look. A, B, C. Equals. Uh, yeah, I think I just do this now. A minus B, two A plus two B, negative A plus two B. So let's take a look. A equals A minus B, B equals two A plus two B. C equals negative A plus two B. Well, actually, we do have a problem here, because I can cancel out the A's, right? And so B has to equal zero. So if there's um. Yeah, so any vector in R three, like uh, five, six, I don't know, seven. There's no way for me to to put an input in here and get this as an output, because you see all the outputs have B equals zero. Right? So.
Can we?
Oh, sorry, B equals zero. Sorry, the middle, yeah, sorry, I did the wrong one. But yeah, the same thing. Go ahead.
Uh, can we use just the rank to prove that it's not on two?
Uh, oh, yeah, I guess you can. Yeah, I guess you can. Yeah, so since there's a.
I'm so confused, because uh, I was thinking the exact same thing, like you could use the rank. So. Um, what I previously had written down was that the row, if if the rows are like, if all rows have a leading entry, that means uh, it's uh. It's on two. If all the columns have a leading entry, that means it's a one to one, right? Cause that's what Horowitz said. But then literally two examples later, he did a question where not not all uh rows had um. A leading entry, but it was still on two. So I erased that and now I'm confused, because you guys.
Because because if for, there is the column and the line for that. If the if the row are are the same of the rank, it's on two. If the column, something like that now.
Yeah, well, it's it's related to this. Yeah, so look, the the transformation. Goes from R two to R three. So if the rank matches uh, R two, the input space, if the rank matches the input space. Rank, I'll just say matches the input space, so say input, then it is one to one. If the rank matches the output space, R three, right? Output space, then it's on two. So the rank here is, the rank here is two, which doesn't match R three, so it's not on two. But precisely why is this? Because there's a restriction on what beacon.
Hey, so if like, if we're supposed to say, if if a question asks to explain, cause like I just, I learned this yesterday and I just have literally rank. Equal out space, um, output space, and I have, okay, it's on two. But someone's supposed to say, explain it, then what would you actually say?
Like, yeah, yeah, so I mean, it, this question also says explain and they just use the rank thing. They don't do all this. Right? They don't do, they don't do all all this. So you can, the right thing is enough of an explanation.
Yeah, never mind. We have more questions than you.
Right? Yeah, so. But this is like, this is actually to show if something's on to, that means every vector in the output space has an X, Y input. So I try to solve for that and I see that there's actually a restriction on what the output can be. It it has to be, the the second value has to be zero.
I know, I know in the study hall, they they put it into like a augmented matrix, and if there's like a zero row at the bottom. Like if it's inconse- if it's an inconsistent system, then it's not on two, but if it's consistent, it's on two.
Well, this is, this is consistent still. This is consistent.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, there is a zero vector, so means that they are, yeah.
Right? This is a homogeneous system, so it's zero, zero, zero here, should write in a different color, right? So it's it's, this is still consistent. X equals zero, Y equals zero, right? And it's just.
Make it equal to A, B, C, it's gonna be consistent when you change it to RREF.
Oh, when you change it to RREF, okay, yeah, 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 that makes sense. So yeah, if you uh, if you were to put the sys- if you were to put this. Matrix, and you're trying to make it equal to A, B, C, some other vector, right? Yeah, it becomes inconsistent. Which is essentially, essentially what I did here, but from a different perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, for being on to need to be three column.
Yeah, yeah. And the only way that you're on to and one to one is if it's an N by N matrix, if it's a square matrix, right? Which is what the next thing is, so is is S uh, an isom- is S an isomorphism? Uh, so whatever, um, so I'll just just write part C. Um, no, it's not. Because not on two.
Good question. So why in the question did they give us that other matrix if we're not gonna use it at all?
Next part, part D is T one to one. Part D is T one to one. So let's figure out. T is the matrix, the matrix of notation of T is uh, A, which is one, negative, three, negative, three. One, negative, two, six, negative, two, six, one. So. Uh, is it one to one? That's our first thing. So I guess we can just, we can just put in RREF. I mean, I would do it a little differently, but yeah, we can just put it. Put in RREF and use the rank things to to figure it out, right? So. R two might, R two might, eh, R two minus R one, R three plus two R one. Oh, actually, there's the row reduction already here on the sheet, so let's just, let's just in RREF. R, R, E, F. We get one, negative, three, negative, three, zero, one, nine, zero, zero, one. And so we can see that this is uh, has a leading entry. Well, this actually isn't RREF, this is just RREF. But you see, there's a leading entry in each row, so in each column. So this is, not only is this one to one, it's also on two, and it's also an isomorphism. Okay, so I'll move on if no one else has any questions. Um, number seven. Number seven is this. So we have um. Uh, T goes from R two to R three defined like that. S goes from R two to R two, which is a rotation of that. Show that T is linear. So for T to be linear, linear, that means that T of AX plus BY. Should equal A, T of, eh, oh, no, actually, no, we don't have to do that. Um, we can write this as a matrix. One, negative, one, two, zero, one, one. Therefore, linear. What was that? What'd you think? That's it. If you can show it as a matrix, it's a linear transformation. End of story. They go through all the trouble of doing what I did, what I was starting to do, um, but I don't think that's necessary. That's not necessary.
Wait, what about, what about the fact that they gave you the angle and the rotation?
This is just part A, this is just part A.
Okay, wait, what? Oh.
Where is that thing where we do like the one over the whatever? Like them to find something like that?
That's the rotation, I think.
M squared plus one, like that?
Something, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's that's for uh, reflection.
That's the reflection.
Oh, yeah, okay. And it's just times a matrix, right?
Uh, then there's a whole ma- then there's a whole matrix, like a whole special thing, like it's like M squared minus one, two M, something. I don't really remember it, but it's it's something big, yeah. Okay, and then part B is uh, determine the standard matrix of T of S. Okay? So I need to find the matrix of S. So the matrix of S is. Pretty much R, uh, the angle is two pi over three. Uh, the matrix representation of that is gonna be equal to um, cosine of two pi over three. Negative sine of two pi over three, sine of two pi over three. And cosine of two pi over three. So I'll just plug all this in. Cosine of two pi over three is negative a half. Negative a half, negative a half, and then. Sign of that will be root three over two, so negative root three over, root three over two. Root three over two. Okay. So that's my matrix representation. T of S is just gonna be these two matrices multiplied. Right? So uh, three by two, yeah, one, two, one. Negative one, zero, one. Right? So um. Now, uh, I can just multiply them, so I just take. The first column of my answer is gonna be one, two, one, negative, one, zero, one. Times negative a half, roots three over two. So negative a half times one, two, one. Plus root three over two times negative one, zero, one. So a half minus root three over, negative a half, minus root three over two. So minus one plus root three over two.
Wait, what did you do? Or you like, you plugged in your values? What's this? Or you did the?
This is the matrix representation of T. And this is the ma- the matrix representation of R theta.
Or S, right?
A what, sorry?
Wasn't it S?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, S, but S. Equals R theta, equals R two pi over three.
We are multi- it's normal multiplication of.
Now I'm just multiplying, yeah. So this is gonna be uh, negative. Negative. One plus zero. Okay, and this one is gonna be negative a half plus root three over two is just negative one plus root three over two. Okay, so that's my first column of the answer, second column.
Why'd you just multiply it by negative one half and root three over two?
Uh, would, I did, negative one half.
No, no, but why?
Uh, because I multiply like this, negative one half.
No, no, I'm saying like the above, the U one.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Well, that's that's like what I'm doing this whole time. So to find, you mean to find this top, top component or?
No, I'm saying, why are you doing that?
Oh, because I'm just, I'm trying to multiply these two matrices.
Isn't it four by, two by two?
This one's, this one's uh, three by two and this one's two by two. So you can multiply them. Good, okay, so um. Uh, the next U two is gonna be uh, one minus one, two, zero, one, one. Times the second column, which is negative root three over two. Times negative a half. Uh, so that's gonna be, well, is it okay if I just look at the solution and just put the solution there and use that? So that's one minus root three over two, negative root three, negative one minus root three over two.
Just to clarify, this second line, the root three over two and a half, where do you get this from?
Uh, from the second column of our R theta.
Okay.
When you're multiplying matrices, you do this matrix times the first column. That's the first column of your answer. And then.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the second column of your answer will be this matrix times the second column.
Yeah, so your U one is just like your first column.
My first column, U one is the first column. Yeah, exactly. So the total final answer is gonna be negative one minus root three over two. Negative one, uh, negative one plus root three over two. One minus root three over two, negative root three, negative one minus root three over two.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yeah.
For the first thing where you did the linear. Where you said if you just can write it out as.
Yeah, if I can write it out as a matrix, it's a linear transformation.
Okay, I would have used like the E's, like the one, zero and zero, one. Would that have been wrong to like get the standard matrix?
What do you mean, one, zero and zero, one? Where, where?
The E one, E two, E three stuff?
Oh, you would have applied it, you would have applied it. Yeah, yeah, you would have applied it to each of the standard. Yeah, yeah, that would work too.
I also do that for like, cause that's on. I also do that for like, cuz that's I'm cuz I'm thinking from what I would have done in a real exam situation, cuz I'm pretty sure if I see this, I would do that, so I'm just.
It would work. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The the basic representation of a transformation. For this bottom one, no, well. How would you do that? How would you say, how would you apply uh two pi over three rotation to E one?
No, not the rotation part, just the T part.
The the T part, yeah, that would work. Yes, that would work. I thought you meant also for the S.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's for the T part. Okay, well, that's the answer. This is the matrix. Okay, next one is number eight. Number eight is this. So I think there's only eight questions. Uh, yeah, there's only eight. This is the last question? Yeah, it's the last question. Good, because I wanna have a break before the test. So uh find all eigenvalues of A and their corresponding eigenvectors. Not bad. So subtract lambda from each of the columns. So it's negative four minus lambda. Three, eight, negative two minus lambda. Find the determinant of this. Well, it's a very small determinant, so it's it'll be okay. Oh, sorry, we want this determinant to equal zero. Negative four minus lambda, three, uh, sorry, sorry. Finding the determinant of this is. Negative four minus lambda times negative two minus lambda minus uh. Three times eight equals zero. So negative four times negative two is eight, negative four times negative lambda is positive four lambda. Negative lambda times negative two is plus two lambda, negative landa lambda times lambda is plus lambda squared. Minus twenty four equals zero. Uh lambda squared plus six lambda. Minus sixteen equals zero, so uh eight times two, so nega- uh. Uh, eight times, yeah, eight times two, so eight and negative two, so lambda plus eight. Lambda minus two. So my actual lambda values are negative eight and two.
Yeah, this might be a pretty dumb question, right? I was just kinda confused with something with R, the dimensions is like literally the R, like R two, R three. But the span of a vector is basically what again?
The span of a vector is, so if I have a ve- if I have a single vector. The span of the vector is every possible linear combination of it, right? But since there's, since there's only one, it's just every possible scalar multiple of it.
For this one, right?
So just for just for one vector, this is just for one vector, right? It's it's just a line. The span of one vector is a line. Now, if I had two vectors, if I had two vectors, the span of every linear combination is a whole plane. Right? Because any point in this plane I can create as a combination. Of these vectors, right? So like three times this one and two times this one would get me to that point. And any point in the plane would 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 that would work for, right? And then the same thing with if I had three vectors, then it's just three D space. Anywhere in three D space, I can make a.
Yeah.
By the way, for the first thing. Where you subtracted the again, wh- lambda from the.
Diagonals, yeah.
Main diagonal, yeah. Aren't the three and eight supposed to turn into negatives as well? Because it's like. It's lambda times the identity matrix minus A, right?
Okay, you're, yeah, you're thinking of, you're thinking of lambda I minus A, you're right, but what I'm doing is A minus lambda I.
Oh, you can do either or.
So and I I much prefer this way because I don't turn everything negative. It's just literally all this is is subtract lambda from all the diagonals. This is add lambda to all the diagonals and turn everything negative. So it's like one extra step that I don't wanna do.
Alright, thank you.
So there's my eigenvalues to find the eigenvectors. Well, I just go back to the original matrix. Four, negative four minus lambda, I'll write it here again, negative four minus lambda. Three, eight, negative two minus lambda. Right? So that's that's the matrix. I put in each eigenvalue. So let's start with eigenvalue one, which is negative eight. So negative four, well, sorry, negative four plus eight is four. Three, eight, negative two plus eight is six. Okay, so I wanna put this in RAF, while I notice that this can turn into that, which can turn into that. Which can turn into that. So the null space of this is um. The null space of this is going to be X equals Y equals T, X equals negative three over four T. So the null space is the span of negative three over four, one. Okay, so that's my first, that's my first eigenspace.
Yeah, okay.
Equals that. For my second lambda, lambda two, which is two. I still, I just subtract two from each diagonal. So negative four minus two is negative six. Three, eight, stay where they are. And negative two minus two is negative four. Okay, so once again, I try to row reduce a little bit, right? So divide the top one by three, so it's two. One, divide the bottom one by four is two, one, multiply one of them by negative one. Subtract the rows. Divide by two. So uh X is equal to one half T, Y is equal to T. So my eigenspace for lambda two is the span of. A half one. Any questions about this question? There's still a part B, but it's kind of different, so. Any questions about how I found the eigenvalues, eigenvectors, eigenspaces?
How do you write that as an eigenvector?
The span? Well, any vector in that span, any vector in that span is an eigenvector.
Okay, how do I write it as an answer?
This is the answer. This is eigenvectors, so this, this is the one of the answers and this is the other.
Oh, okay. So eigenvector and eigenspace is the same thing?
Well, eigens- the eigenspace contains all the eigenvectors. Because there's not just one eigenvector, right? There's a whole line of them. Or a whole plane of them, or anything, something like that. Or there's a whole space of them. And they all are contained into into the span, into this span here.
Alright, alright.
Okay, and then the last question on the practice exam and the last question that I'll probably be doing is B. Which is, is A diagonalizable? If so, find the matrix P and diagonal matrix D such that that, so. Is it diagonalizable? Yes, it is, because we had two distinct eigenvalues. And we got two distinct spans out of it. So the um so eigenvalue one had a single multiplicity, right? Multiplicity of one. And it had one vector in the null space, so that matched out. This one, eigenvector, oh, this should be eigen two, sorry, two, had a multiplicity of one. And its span also had one vector. So I can, it is diagonalizable, yeah?
What do you mean by the multiplicity of like one or?
That means that like if I were here, if I were solving for this, right? And let's say I ended up, let's say it was a third degree polynomial, like had a d- power of three, right? And when I factored it, I'd end up with like a squared here. And so negative eight would technically show up twice. Negative eight would be an answer twice. So that would be a multiplicity of two.
So it's like based on the degree on the bracket, right?
And so then, if it was still to be diagonalizable, if I still wanted it to be diagonalizable, I would have to get two vectors. In the span of the eigenspace. I'd have to get two there. It's possible that I I still get one. In that case, it's not diagonalizable anymore.
And that's if you sub- that's when you substituted eight and then got the RAF, right?
Yeah, yeah, I substituted that related one, yeah, yeah. But this, so this isn't true. I didn't get a squared there and I didn't get two eights, so I just got one. Since I got one of each here and I got one vector in each here, we are diagonalizable, we're all good, it all matches.
Wait, that would also mean that you need two free variables, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So if I had two eights, I would need two free variables in this section. It would be like negative three over four T plus S. Y equals T, Z equals S, right?
Okay.
In the solution on the test, they talk about geometric multiplicity and algebraic multiplicity. What are those?
This is, this is called the algebraic multiplicity. This is called the geometric al- uh uh multiplicity. The amount of, they have to equal each other if you want it to be di- diagonalizable. They don't actually have to be equal to each other. Lo- lots of times they aren't. But if something is diagonalizable, then they are equal to each other. Alright, so the number of times the root shows up is the algebraic multiplicity. The number of vectors in the null space in this kind of in this in this span is the algebrai- is the, sorry, geometric multiplicity. And so those have to match for it to be diagonalizable. So now to solve this, right, so P. P is going to be our matrix, which contains all the uh vectors, the basis for the vector space, right? So negative three over four, one. And one half one. Okay, that's our P. And D is gonna be a diagonal matrix, so it's gonna have something here with zeros in these corners. And you just have to match up the vectors from P. So this vector came from here. Which came from using the eigenvalue negative eight. So in this corner here, I have to put negative eight. And then this one, I'll use a different color. This one came from here, which came from us using the eigenvalue of two. So in this corner here. I have to put eigenvalue of two.
Does it matter where you put it?
It does. It would technically be wrong, not just technically, it would be wrong if you if you did that.
Why?
Because the whole point is that it does this, P inverse of AP equals D. So that's the whole, that's what it says here too, right? That's the whole, that's the whole point of getting this P and this D matrix. And so if you wrote D the wrong way, this wouldn't be true, because this would be the wrong way. This would be upside down, right? So this does equal negative eight too.
I mean, you could still do it if you sw- switch the vectors in the P matrix, then you could do it.
Yeah, that's true. If you switch these around, then you have to switch these around, right?
Uh, one more thing. You guys haven't really seen any questions where they actually ask a P inverse, and if you do, you guys just find it like usually, right? There's no.
There's no separate way, no, it's just like find the inverse of a matrix that we've been doing, right? They might ask us to do that, actually, actually, this might be it. They might combine. Something from, remember, they didn't do chapter three with us, right? They didn't do that end of chapter three. And a part of the end of chapter three is finding the inverse using the adjugate and the cofactor matrix and all that, right? And so maybe they're gonna say, show that this works by finding the inverse using the cofactor matrix or something like that. Just a thought. I don't know if that's what they're gonna do, but maybe if I was the teacher, I might do that.
Do you wanna try that right now?
Well, so this is not that difficult to find the inverse of this one, right? So the inverse of this, you you just use the formula for a two by two. So it was a three over four, a half, one, one, right? And so the inverse of this is just one over the determinant of this, which is negative three over four minus a half. Okay, times uh one, negative three over four, negative one, negative a half. So these two become negative, these two become negative, these two switch places. And you do one over the determinant here. To get the, to get the.
And for like uh, it was like a three by three, you have to simplify then to the determinant.
Yeah, yeah, then you have some more work to do. Then you have some more work to do, right?
Let's just say it's still like.
You would do, you would do one over the determinant times the adjugate, determinant of A times the adjugate. The adjugate. Is the cofactor of A transposed. And the cofactor of A. Cofactor of A is the same way like when you find the determinant, you're doing the cofactor pretty much. You you take the, is there a three by three here somewhere? Here, like if I were trying to find the co- well, of this one, let's say this one. If I were trying to find the determinant, I would choose some row, right? I would choose some row, this one. And what I'm doing is I'm doing uh this, I I choose like I do one times the value of the cofactor matrix at that position. The cofactor matrix is the determinant of everything else. Right? The determinant of everything else.
Don't you not multiply for the cofactor matrix?
For the cofactor matrix, you don't, right? For the determinant, you do multiply, right? But for the cofactor matrix, you you just want the cofactors themselves in each position.
Right.
So the determinant of that.
Always make sure positive or negative position though.
Yeah, that's the only thing that also matters is that these are positive, these are negative.
Just expanding along the eye thrower J column, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's just that you don't actua- so like when you're doing the determinant, you multiply by this number and then this number, right? Times determinant. When you're doing the, when you're doing the cofactor matrix, you don't do that. How how about I do one quickly? How about I do one quickly and then, and then that'll be, that'll be it, okay? So I'll find it um.
I wanna see if I'm gonna get cameras reading this.
So um let's say we have A, which is one, two, three, three. Oh, one, one, two, one. And I'm trying to find the inverse using the formula. Right, so I know A inverse is equal to one over the determinant of A. Times the adjugate of A. So first things first that I'm gonna do is I'm going to um, well, actually, I'm gonna do a row reduction quickly to to simplify this. So I'll do row one minus row two, sorry, row three. So it's gonna be. One minus one is zero, two minus two is zero, three minus one is two, three, oh, one. Uh, one, two, one, okay. I will expand here. So it's gonna be two times the determinant of three, oh, one, two. That is the cofactor matrix of that position, right? That's the cofactor matrix. So the determinant of this is two times six, two times six, which is twelve. Let me just make sure that's right. Okay, so we found the determinant, determinant of A. Equals twelve, alright. Let's find the adjugate. The adjugate is the transpose of the cofactor matrix. Okay, so let's find the cofactor matrix then of A. And what that is, is it's another three by three matrix where each position is the cofactor of that position. So let's let's try that. Let's try, what's the cofactor of this position here? Well, it's the determinant of this. Uh, yeah, at the end I transpose it. At the end I transpose it to to get the adjugate, to get the adjugate of A. So, so technically that's not equal anymore. Yeah, so I find the cofactor matrix and then at the end I transpose. So at this position, it the the determinant, uh, at this position, the cofactor matrix is the determinant of this. So zero minus two, so I put minus two. Okay, now at this position, well, I just do it in black, this position, it's that, ignore the middle, right? So three times one, one times minus one, so three minus one. Three minus one is two. Again, we don't multiply by this number, but we do have to pay attention that this is in a negative position. So it's gonna be negative two. Remember, the the negative positions are, look like this. The negative position, all the rest are positive. So now for this one.
So we just look at the basically almost everything except for the multiplication of the coefficient outside, basically.
Yeah, it's pretty much exactly the determinant. It's just you don't multiply by the actual coefficient on the outside. That's right, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot. Yeah, yeah, continue.
Okay, so this one here is gonna be the determinant of this, so it's gonna be six minus zero. It's in a positive position, so it's just six. Okay, here is gonna be the determinant of that kind of, you know what I'm saying, right? Like that. Two minus six is negative four. It's in a negative position, so it's gonna be. It was a three there, right? It was gonna be four, cuz it was negative four. This one is gonna be the determinant of the corners, so one minus three is negative two. It's in a positive position, so it's just negative two. This one is gonna be one times two is two, minus two is zero, in a negative position, doesn't really matter. Uh, this one is gonna be the determinant of two times one minus zero. Uh, this one is gonna be the determinant of two times one minus zero, so two, it's in a positive position, so it's just two. This one is gonna be determinant of one times one minus nine, so one minus nine is negative eight, it's in a negative position, so it's eight. And then finally, this one is gonna be determinant of one times zero minus six, so zero minus six is minus six, it's in a positive position, so it's just minus six. And then I take the transpose of this, negative two, negative two, negative six, four, negative two, two. Six, zero, eight, there's my transpose, and I multiply this by one over the determinant. And that will be A inverse. And that's, like, you can leave it there. Oh, I somehow, did I do transpose wrong? No, oh, no, no, I didn't do it transpose. Two, six, negative four, two, two, yeah, no, I did it right, they just didn't write the answer fully for some reason, but.
Alright, good luck, everybody.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, don't you have to do it for the whole row?
What do you mean for the whole? For the determinant, yeah, for the, but look, the rows are zero.
Oh, you put it in, oh, okay, okay, makes sense.
I did a row operation, so I got two zeros there.
Okay. Wait, but um, wait, you don't have to do a row operation, right, you just do that to simplify it?
Yeah, I did that, so that I got two zeros here, and so then it was just one, it was one multiplication. But if I didn't do one, well, I would just, I would just go probably across this. And so I do three times this determinant, right? And then, uh, sorry, negative three times this determinant, cause it's a negative position. And one, one times this determinant. Negative one times, sorry, I keep forgetting the negative, negative one times that determinant, yeah.
The adjoint, what'd you do? You multiply by another row and subtract it by another row or something, or a column?
Uh, in this transformation to get, I mean.
On the adjoint.
Yeah, well, here, I just did, I just did like the co- it is as if like, if I, if I'm doing the determinant, and I'm choosing here, right? Here, if I, if I started this position, then I find the determinant of this, right, I find the determinant of that. That, that number is what goes in this position in the cofactor matrix. That determinant.
So you're just finding the smaller two by two matrix.
Yeah, a bunch of times, nine times, nine times I'm doing it, right? One, one time for each position, and you don't multiply it by the number, though, you don't multi- you're just doing the cofactor matrix.
Wait, it's for every number in the augmented matrix, right?
Well, this is just a normal matrix, not augmented, but it's, yeah, every, every, every number in in the matrix, yeah.
So the adjugate matrix is the cofactor matrix?
Transposed, transposed.
Okay.
Right, so you take, you get the cofactor matrix using that method, then you transpose it to get the adjugate, and you multiply that by one over the determinant, and that's how you get A inverse.
Yeah, with the, I even know where they're gonna apply this for Kramer's rule though, but. I don't even wanna stress about it, honestly.
Yeah, well, Quick, Kramer's rule is, is, this isn't Kramer's rule, Kramer's rule is something else.
I know.
It's right after.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't even know where they're gonna put it.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, maybe they'll just have like one question, that's just like use Kramer's rule, it's like a big question or something, I don't know. But.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a break for half an hour, yeah, I'm gonna take a rest for half an hour, I've been doing this for four and a half hours now, so.
Guys, huh, uh, I, good luck, I don't know.
You guys are good.
Good luck, they're gonna curve us.
Yeah. Of course, of course, I'm happy to help, I'm happy to help for sure.
Thank you.
No problems, no more problems.
Good luck, good luck.
Good luck.
Physics today sessions tomorrow, right?
So.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm starting.